Thank you.
Good morning. You thought it would be changing when it be there. But you would know by the time I leave. You kind of stringed on when you're in that crate path like, wow. Indulgence is it?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Then my brother.
I finally got a phone.
Welcome, everybody. Welcome people again. The SLIFOR just finished the non-public session regarding the civil property portion of our meeting. I assume most folks are here for the public hearing, which was warned at 6:00 P. M. And we will wait until 6:00 to start that. And in the interim, unless there's objections from the board, we're going to go on with other items on our agenda. We could go to the next item, which would be approval of minutes from September 16th.
They look good to me. I move that we accept them as presented.
I second that.
Any discretion?
I'm good.
All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. All right. We could probably get through board reports, I imagine. Alice, you want to go first?
Sure. Um, actually, can I not go first?
Sure.
Uh-oh.
Nothing to report.
Okay.
Tracy?
I have nothing to report.
Oh, gosh. Um, so Conservation Commission met last Thursday. It was quite a crowd. Um, I think there was a little misunderstanding about the nature of the agenda items, but Shirley did a great job explaining the purpose of the meeting. So the sewer, the proposed, sorry, proposed septic rules were on there again, just for a follow-up reminder, um, since Conservation had voted to recommend them to this board. And so you may see some of those votes here. There were some personal questions, which I asked to come forward to public hearing. I answered some basics, uh, but I feel like anything that's a lingering question really needs to come forward at this public hearing and not be answered by me, who's one member of this board. So hopefully you'll see those here this evening. The big item that took most of the meeting was the ZBAA uh, special exception request by Laramie Farms. There are 10 wetlands impacts. So if you've been following along with ZBAA, which I confess I had not fully followed all of it, um, I'm sorry, okay. Um, there were 10 wetlands crossings. And so you know, when you drive down the road, you go over culverts and things like that. So driveways have culverts, and that's what's proposed. Um, they either have to mitigate it, uh, and do it, and put in a culvert in such a way that it meets the requirements from New Hampshire D E S, or they have to replace the wetlands. And so they, the developer came with their wetlands, I guess he's, what does he, environmental engineer? I believe is its title. And they answered some questions from the board about what the impacts would be, explained the type of culvert. So it'd be like an open box culvert. And that the, any of the grade changes obviously are subject to D E S scrutiny as well. There are many departments at D E S that look at various portions, um, various components of the project. But the topic for conservation was specifically only those 10 wetland impacts. So we took a look at it. No decisions were made, but there were a lot of great questions. And anytime you look at a plan, if you're not a land use planning person or a civil engineer, you know, looking at those topographic maps is pretty challenging. So we set aside some time, um, for the folks on conservation to do two things. One is for them to go look at a potential, a project that the developer has done before, in which they did put in some of these natural ponds. Uh, these are all ponds that are open bottoms, so they're not a concrete pond. There's pond, they're intended to be filled in with cattails and native flora and fauna. So that's going to be scheduled, uh, through Rob Taylor. The other item that members are tasked with doing is going to see Rob if they have any questions or need help reading and interpreting these maps, because it was a lot to digest in one session. And no matter how big a plan is, it, they're still hard to see with little print. So that is going to go forward to the next conservation meeting, which will be, I believe, it might actually also be the 7th. November 7th is the next conservation meeting. So that topic is the impacts, those 10 impacts are the only topic. It's not whether we like development, it's not whether we want it. Um, it's just to discuss the wetlands impacts and to understand it. So we can make a recommendation back to ZBAA. And Shirley Green is our chair. She explained that the Conservation Commission's role is only to make that recommendation, recommendation to ZBAA. We don't have any land use authority, right? We can't tell anyone what to do. We just get, we analyze what is given to us based on, on the conservation aspect of the project and give feedback. So that will, that kind of, um, feedback conversation will be had on November 7th. And that was the major topic, other than I think the conservation folks are planning on going to trunk or treat. So you might see them there in trunk or treat this, what, October 26th, I think it is. That's all of it.
Okay. Uh, the planning board continues to work on suggested zoning changes for ballot next year. Um, there's a couple more on our next agenda. Um, it looks like there'll be four or five total suggestions this year. And, uh, completed that, um, application, uh, for a grant for continuing a full rewrite of the zone, uh, which was submitted last week sometime, I believe, uh, that we talked about last time. Alice?
Thank you. So the Heritage Commission met at the end of September, and they continue to address suggested, um, guidelines for those who would like guidance on development and restoration. Madeline Johnson did tender her resignation as chair, and so the Heritage Commission is looking for new leadership and new members. Um, Eva Matten is planning for the holiday decorations of the downtown area. Um, and their monthly business coffee will take place on the 3rd Friday in October at Energetic Edge, which is the 24-hour gym by Ziggy.
Any questions regarding the board reports? No. Um, a good time for town manager's report?
Yeah, I could do that. All right. Town manager report, um, staff report, as I normally start. Um, after showing great dedication and ability to learn the position, um, the town has promoted Nicolette Husha to the position of grounds crew leader. So she took Rick's position, moving up a step. Um, we're still down a groundskeeper position, and Jim and Jeremy are continuing to plan how and when they want to fill that position. But, um, we did make that promotion over the last month. So I think it was much deserved. She's done a lot of hard work by herself late and shown that she's, she's dedicated to learning and continuing to do better. So, um, Whitney Hall Public Safety Building continues to, to go forward well. Right now on Whitney Hall, we're finishing up three-phase power conduit into the, and conduit into the building, preparing for the transformer to be placed and wire to actually be pulled into that transformer. Um, hoping to have power into the building in the next couple of weeks. We'll be trying to coordinate that with Liberty Utilities. Um, inside finish work has begun with the refinishing of the floors upstairs and carpet being placed in some of the library meeting rooms in different places. One thing we did run into that I continued to monitor on, I think it was Friday, Thursday or Friday, the floor refinishing people called me up immediately after they got there. And as soon as they started trying to refinish, they blew through one edge of the floor. It's been refinished so many times. So we, we made the plan to just kind of keep going and see what it did before we made any drastic changes. They were able to sand the rest of the floor. Things settled down quickly, so the most of the floor looked really good. There was only one little place where they blew through. They, it looks like they did a prep on the whole second side with the second sanding, and so far everything's looking good. So we're, we're taking it on a day-by-day, stroke-by-stroke basis to see where we're at.
This is at the library or upstairs?
Upstairs.
Yeah.
So, um, what I think is going to end up, I think we're going to end up with a good enough floor. There may be a few places where they can't quite get all the way down. So we'll have, I don't want to say it'll be a bad spot, but it'll look just slightly different than the rest of the floor. But I do think we're in a place where we can get it finished, keep the, the history floor that's in there, and continue moving forward for this project. But we will need to note that this floor will not be able to be fully sanded and refinished.
I got him.
Okay, thank you. Um, with that, um, other things are going on outside. It may have been noticed that, uh, the trailers and connexes have been removed. The site contractors back in there, starting to do site work. They're going to be laying granite curbing this week in preparation for slaying the sidewalks and putting in pads. And they're going to be putting in bike poles, all the, all the outside, I guess, all the decorative stuff, but parking lot sidewalks, all the stuff to finish up the project. And we did, working with Bread Loaf, we set the punch list walkthrough for October 31st. We talk about every week, we're pretty confident we're going to be able to keep that, but we'll, we'll move it if it's needed. But we're going to be really close to, to hitting the deadline and being there.
I'm having a hard time.
And then after the 31st, um, we expect a couple more weeks and Bread Loaf will be, be done with the project. And we'll hopefully be moved, starting to, to work on moving into the building. And I continue to watch, watch the budget and the time schedule with Bread Loaf to make that call.
Can we? Excuse me. Folks, we are in the middle of a meeting. If you have side conversations, please take them outside. Thank you.
Uh, the Public Safety Building, the exterior and interior walls have been placed. Went through late last week, and it was exciting to be able to walk through and see where all the offices were placed and see the building starting to come to life. Um, the roof trusses have been placed over the, the bays. And, um, it's nice to see we're still hopeful that it'll be dried in prior to winter. So the plan is that, and I did hear him tell somebody last week that the plan was to be done by May of 2025 soon. Mascoma Lakeside Park, I'd like to thank everybody who attended the Mascoma Lakeside Park ceremony this past Saturday, the committee and DPW staff, and thank the committee and DPW staff that helped decorate and get the park in great shape for the, the ceremony. The ceremony went well, and the plaque that was dedicated by From the Town to Meredith and Doug was a complete surprise to them. Like to thank John for his great speech. And, um, the beautiful day we had, the wonderful fall colors, put an exclamation point on that wonderful ceremony. And I'd also like to give a little thanks to the musicians who were there that day that donated their time to, to make the event so special. Police Department reports, the Police Department applied for and was awarded a grant that will cover 75% of the purchase of the computer and speed radar system for the new cruiser. So this is a New Hampshire Highway Safety Grant that's separate from the enforcement grants that we get. So again, like to thank the Police Department for keeping their eyes open and finding those even smaller grants at times to help offset the costs to the taxpayers.
How much is that grant?
I don't know exactly. It's 75% of the, the total outfitting.
He's like that.
I just turned my vision five degrees. And I had 75% of the, the computer, I think it covers. It appears like four grand total, or five grand something years.
Thank you. It's a good chunk.
It is.
And then the Police Department has signed up for the drug takeback once again for October 26th, between 10:00 and 2:00 o'clock at the transfer station. Um, we will have one meeting before then, but the trunk or treat, as Kate mentioned, is coming up. If you would like to participate in that, please e-mail Enfield Recreation to pick any spot on the list, or you can always stop by and let us know as well.
Can you repeat the drug takeback part?
October 26th, from 10:00 to 2:00 at the transfer station. And then from a DPW note, um, Jim met with a team of senior engineers from U N H at the Shaker Bridge site, and they're going to use this project as a senior, senior capstone project, and will be working in conjunction with the design engineer and considering a bunch of alternative designs. So it's nice to be able to be part of that project. Right now, the DPW is working on fall grading of gravel roads. They've replaced fork over the last two weeks. As we mentioned before, Nicolette worked really hard getting Lakeside Park ready, and just like to thank her again for that. The boat ramp docks will be removed from the lakes this Friday ahead of Lake Drawdown. And DPW's continues to work on the lead service line inventory ahead of their October 15th submission deadline. Four-to-three water bills have complete, and bill should be in the mailboxes this week. And then the sidewalk tractor was delivered last week and Ed Tourville's mounting lights and the drop spreader to get that ready for pinner. So a lot going on there. And probably the most important thing is Chantel, our administrative assistant, will be back October 21st. And the guys down here cannot wait. And that is my manager's report.
Any questions, Phil?
Can we try to bring in more chairs?
Yeah.
We have a lot.
Yeah. Takes a few minutes to.
Yeah.
Couple of minutes.
So for the folks who are just joining us, um, we have an early start to meeting for non-public session. The public hearing is going to start at 6:00, as it was warned. Um, if there's no objection, I would suggest we just recess until 6:00. We can get some more chairs set up, use the restroom and whatever. Um, and then we'll start the public hearing at 6:00.
It's like, because on my screen, that's okay. Uh, you, you're a speaker.
Yeah, let me ask.
It'll take like 30 seconds.
It'll take 30 seconds.
Oh. That's gonna be, start a couple minutes here and get that done. Karen has some discussions.
That's awesome. Thanks for your input. Sometimes when I'm in mine. I mean, it's not, it's completely people can't hear.
Oh, there's Alicia.
It's like, it's not a smile. Well, I, when I was a small, I need to find that I couldn't do.
That's what my brother did.
I was like, I'm missing, it's not funny. I think, yeah. I was like, I'm here for a party. Um, to get Ken a favorite. So if you go online, or you can go to, you can go to, I think I know, get your book. It's on, and each, uh, around, and then there's, out here. But on, essentially, I said, I said, like, I, I mean, anyway. And it all, but here, right here, so if you can, we need to, but it's me. If you want to watch it later, you can watch it on YouTube. Yeah, it's, if you go to YouTube. And then I think I have to do it. Yeah, well, that's, I get all of their, that's all. Yeah, maybe you do it. It's like, all of.
I should say it for free, but remember.
I think I five or seven.
That's all, there are two registered, so there'll be an opportunity for another round.
I'm busy now.
Yeah, yeah, that's it. Exactly, correct. You sure you want to do that? Okay.
All right, all right.
Anybody who could share with me, pass around, please do, because I only need 50 copies.
I have this one back.
Now, we printed the septic rule in some of.
Oh, the septic rule, okay.
I wonder if this is a, a record.
No, it's not.
Well.
Yeah, we had.
True.
Yeah. Yeah.
You got at least 75 online, too. I got some people in, but I don't know if I got them all. Oh, if I hit you, all of you, that's.
I don't know if it's us or not.
Let's find out. Oh, that's everyone. Right.
Let her do it.
There you go. I needed everyone else to forget.
I should be too, hey, real early and.
Yeah, I really, I'm like, I don't listen here. I'm like, look at that, I'm done. You want to stay here?
Bingo.
But I feel like it's a straight line to the door. Not that they wouldn't like you.
There's one mic too, if you want. This one here?
Let me move this over. I think we have, we're gonna need, we have, or we can give away those, sir?
We can get some.
I need a bigger conference.
You're working.
Hey, we're so.
Actually, we're probably not, because it goes by sanding usually.
And so it's pretty good in this room because we have the extra doors.
I don't, we need a space for the owl to.
The owl will probably be the first one out of here.
So we could probably get that. Yeah, we'll probably unplug it.
That's why I. One of these days, I don't want to knock.
I should bid my, just in case, I believe my father doesn't.
So no, no storms in Texas or anything weird?
I'm sunny.
Uh, it's black sun.
My dad thinks he's flying into Sarasota tomorrow. He was, then he's like, we were, it goes down, I was like, ah, that's my friend. There will be no flying in where first responders are going to be trying to work. See, well, you know, I have friends who lost, I still have time, I hope they stop washing, San Diego Beach. If you don't, well, and then so, I, I'll eat. And other people who turn down their vacations. Still looks kind of angry. It's like it's gonna be a category.
It is.
His head is turned, it's not good.
Where's your father going for?
Oh, he has a house in Angkor.
Where's Pingu?
It is right below Sarasota, it's like 45 minutes below Sarasota, in between that and Fort Charlotte. And last time, his neighborhood like washed and he. It's nice.
Is he there?
Yeah. He was kind of fly down tomorrow. The airport's.
Oh, it is, okay. One's coming in a lot lower on the peninsula.
It's not good.
It's going right through Tampa.
Okay, yeah, but they got the storms.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, storms are just bad. You saw it, found it. So it did it at the top, the other side of the cherry bikes. It automatically did it, so. No, it was, it was a special button. It did it fair. But we are talking.
Welcome, everyone. Welcome. It's great to see such a large turnout. Uh, the public hearing is going to start in six minutes at 6:00. Uh, I can't emphasize enough how challenging the acoustics can be in this room. So it's really important that everybody is quiet. If you have to speak to somebody on the side, please step outside, uh, to have any side conversations. I'm going to bring us back in the session, and before we get started in the public hearing, we have one quick other item on our agenda we're going to do, because Officer Fry is here for a specific reason that we should be able to handle pretty quickly before 6:00. Uh, go ahead. Highway safety grants acceptance.
So the Police Department applied for and was awarded grant funding again this year for the Enforcement Patrols and Speed Equipment Grant to the New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety, uh, for the fiscal year of 2025. Um, the grant provides funding for overtime patrols for speed, DUI, child safety restraint, um, driver's over, get pulled over, distracted driving patrols. And also, this year, we also get awarded money towards the purchase of a new radar unit to go in the cruiser that's being outfitted now. Um, the total award of the grant was eighty, $8,415.
Any questions for Officer Fry?
Nice part. Thank you.
No, thank you for doing the effort.
I would, as a fan, a motion to accept the Highway Block Safety Grant? So move.
Second.
All in favor, Seth?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate you guys.
Would you guys authorize town manager Morris to sign on your, 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 for?
Motion to authorize town manager, that doesn't mean you sign said grant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
We have three more minutes before the warrant time.
Need more chairs.
There's three right here. There's one there.
There's one over here.
Or chairs in the other room.
Which don't.
Yeah, most of those are gone, but we might as well put people on the table.
Absolutely.
But there are three chairs here.
Three on the front.
Yeah, there's chairs right here, you can grab them. Yeah, there's chairs right here, you can grab them.
Drive late, get a good seat.
That's not usually.
It's not the theory, but.
Thank you.
Dan, are there any chairs out there? You want? We might be able. There's screen stand. Just a couple over. There's space over here for two more chairs. Probably stick it on here.
Over there. That's kind of, I need.
Can't get everyone in. There is one chair right up front here, if somebody wants to come in and. Welcome, everyone, it's six o'clock. We're mostly here for the public hearing. Can I just say in a motion to open the public hearing? So move.
Second.
All in favor? Welcome, everyone, uh, this is an excellent turnout, really appreciate all of you coming uh this evening. Uh, because there are so many of us, and the most important thing here is for us to hear from everybody who wishes to speak and hear from anything that's possible. Uh, we're gonna put a couple of, couple of loose rules in place. One, please state your name for the record, uh, we need to get your name properly in the, in the meeting minutes, so when, when you do speak, please state your name. Uh, I'm gonna ask everyone to address the, the board, uh, we, we don't want side conversations happening, so it's really important to address the board when you're making your comments. Uh, we're gonna let everybody speak once before we have a second turn speaking, so I'm gonna do my best on that, and I hope you'll have patience with me, uh, I'll do what I can. Uh, for the initial statements, we're gonna, we're gonna limit time to three minutes, so that again, just for the schedule for everybody here. Um, hopefully people could be concise, and we're certainly not gonna. Um, you know, make, make statements about what people should say, but I will say, you know, staying in agreement with somebody will likely be just as effective as, as repeating something for an additional three minutes. Uh, so I guess I'm just encouraging brevity so that we can get through everybody this evening. Um, and then, so I'll go through the folks in the room, then I will look to online, uh, who get to the folks in the room, um, and then we'll see where we are time-wise. Uh, so that's sort of what we're gonna try to do, Alice is gonna be keeping the three-minute timer for me. Uh, and we're gonna do our best and hope you'll have patience with us, and thank you for coming.
We do this yourself.
So we can. Go ahead, let's sit down then.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kate Clunley Stewart.
Gracie Young.
John Claude. Merrick Russell.
Alice Kennedy.
Okay, um, so if you would like to be recognized, please, you know, raise your hand as if we're in a classroom, that's the easiest way for me to see around the room. And like I said, I will try to get to everybody before we do, but we'll start off with, um, Ed, do you wanna kick us off with, with just a general summary of how we got here?
Sure, yeah, earlier this summer, um, well, we've been thinking about different things to do to, to maintain our lakes and to make sure we continue to have good. Good water quality, um, you know, earlier this summer, we had a meeting with the planning board and a bunch of lake residents were there. The same thing was expressed, that regulations and things should be put in place to, to maintain water quality, this is something we've been thinking about for a while, is the. Just having some sort of septic rule to make sure that septic's were, were being taken care of properly, we do know that septic systems contribute to water quality issues. Um, we also know, and we've had discussions with the select board about stormwater problems, different resiliency, and we're working on those projects, we're working on a couple grant projects right now, and we're working on a resiliency project for. Stormwater drainage and, and different projects to be engineered to, to get that rectified, so this was one step that in talking with the select board, we thought that we could start moving forward. Uh, septic rule, things that we can talk about to do, just to ensure that people's septic systems are working properly and not polluting the lakes. Um, we've been working on this for a few months with multiple public meetings on this, and we're here at the public meeting with the draft rule that has come about from those meetings.
There are just comments from the board. All right, um, we'll bring it up to the public, so please raise your hand if you'd like to make a comment. Mr. Green.
Yeah, I'm Glenn Green, I live on Crystal Lake, I have a brief statement of support on, on. I really can't read without going. It's on behalf of the executive board of the Crystal Lake and who will contribute in association, and we, or I, would like to express our one hundred percent support for this rule. While it may in time require some adjustment changes, so have been, as a starting point, I think it's perfect. The select board, the health officer, employees of the town have all done a great job of sticking with it and working on this and putting it together. In addition, I wanted to make a statement, um, for the past thirty years, over that, I can't tell you exactly how long, but beyond thirty years. Every weekend, every summer, I'm out on the ways, testing the water with Crystal Lake and looking at the quality of that water. I see a lot of statements made, some of them made in my name, others just off the cuff that are not really accurate. The information is there for anybody who wishes to go to the ULC website and look at it, it'll tell you what's going on. In addition, myself and another gentleman have been for the past six years gathering bacteria data. It's not done yet. While it's not damaged, will in the near future be published for everybody's use. At this point, it does indicate that we need to pump septic systems and maintain septic systems better than we have been, not less so. That's it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Betty Flicka, and I live on Crystal Lake Road, and first, just into, um, every meeting, I think, and I've stayed in a lot. Uh, the last meeting, however, I just have to say that I felt was noticed very poorly because people were, in the select board, were on their phones and making faces. And I don't feel as an Enfield resident that that's appropriate, so I'd like the select board during public comment, to please refrain from being on their phones and making faces. Second of all, when we were asked, when we asked the select board if there was a place where we could find who the inspectors were, it was put, I believe, on the, um, on the, uh. The link, however, there were seven pages of people's names who, um, are either active or pending and not given like a locale, so you could theoretically call forty people, and they could all be from Nashville. So with that aside, I'd like to share something that Ben Agrawal wrote, and he said, hi, folks, I wanted to recognize our neighbor, John Essler. I'm an engineer and speaker at the annual Water Environment Federation conference that alternates between Chicago and New Orleans each year. This conference has about twenty thousand attendees, each year, a very small fraction of members are inducted as WEF fellows, a high honor and mark of expertise that few will ever achieve. Next time you see John, and that's John Essler, make sure to congratulate him on his huge achievement, and I have the printout of his recognition. This is a comment from John Essler. John is a licensed professional engineer with over fifty years of experience in the field of wastewater treatment and operations. He's also probably one of the few people in Enfield who has actually designed a large commercial septic system and has actually managed another large commercial septic system. He's unable to attend tonight's hearing because he's in New Orleans right now, receiving an honorary award from the International Water Environment Federation. While you've heard him at previous meetings, and you may have seen his posts on Facebook, he felt it's still important to speak out in opposition of the proposed rule. And he says, when we talk about the rule tonight, I think it's important to remember the context of this New Hampshire created for this rule. This rule was supposed to be granted by a health officer, if in his judgment it was needed, because of septic systems that were nuisance or injurious to public health. Of course, we know that wasn't the case here, this was written by Crystal Lake residents with the help of the town manager. Just why was this rule created? Well, two of these residents got upset over last year's cyanobacteria bloom on the lake and wanted to do something to prevent it from happening again. It was a noble thought, but as no, most of us know, the major cause of these blooms is the tremendous amount of runoff from a massive rain event, which they couldn't really do anything about. So they decided to blame it on septic systems, and why did the septic system?
Sorry to interrupt, but it has been three minutes, I'll give you, you've been at every meeting, you've been very helpful in this process, so if you have like ten seconds to summarize, but we do need to work our way through every one this evening.
Okay, I spoke somewhat from me, and this is from John.
But you're one speaker at this public hearing, and I appreciate you bringing his, his notes.
Thank you.
But I'm having you do the ten seconds this summer.
Questions then, first, he recommends that the board immediately withdraw the proposed rule from further consideration. Secondly, if the board still feels the need to enact something with regard to septic system, he recommends that you adopt a sonnify rule, which requires only pumping of a septic tank. And third, he recommends that the board take a more orderly approach to protecting our lakes by creating a special committee composed of residents of all of our lakes to develop a program for the appropriate research on water quality. Of the four very different lakes and working conjunction with the Lebanon Watershed Organization and other interested groups to come up with a multifaceted approach to protecting the quality of our lakes.
And thank you very much, buddy.
I live before in on the National Lake. Um, I only spend five months on the lake, the rest of the time, I live either in Florida or live in a house downtown. Um, I think this is excessive, I'd like to see any of the lakes get cleaned up, but. New Hampshire has a law in itself on septic systems, and how many properties have been sold in the last fifteen years on Mass Comer or Crystal or any of the ponds? A lot of them, and state law is that those inspector, if they find any to go outside, that, that septic system has to be inspected, which you hire a septic inspector, and he runs a camera through your system. Either passes. How many of those have been done that way? And those systems that, that are installed today, they're good for forty or fifty years. If you go back further than that, I'm sure there's systems on some of these lakes that aren't state approved, that haven't been inspected, so. You do your own job and you find out who's has and who's hasn't, and yeah, maybe you wanna get those inspected, or they haven't pumped or whatever you need to do. But for people to pay every three years to pump that tank for five or six hundred dollars to be taken to another town to be dumped. And pay another seven hundred and fifty dollars on top of that in today's world to get it inspected is excessive. Because why would you do that when you have a state-approved system? There's a reason for a state-approved system. They know what works and what doesn't work, and you need to set those standards and, and do it that way, and. I, like she just said, it's not just septic systems, the runoff, people live near the rivers, people live near the streams, who knows what their septic systems are like? This is a massive, massive thing to do, and I just think it's way excessive. I think it's nice to make sure the lakes are clean, and like I said, there may be some systems that are not up to date out there, but do your homework, and all you're gonna do is start running and checking on each one individual. It, it tells a story, who's got tanks, who's got septic that have been, you know, the last twenty years that are up to state's backs and work. No, crucify everybody with every three years pumping the tank and, and inspecting the system, it's a lot of money.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye.
Hi, good evening, I'm Sue Crete, I live in Crystal Lake Association, I'd like to thank Glenn for all the work you do, and never thank you guys. So I guess, um, we live, you know, kind of back two hundred and fifty feet, so it really doesn't impact us, but, um, little history, I grew up down in Massachusetts on a big dairy farm. And I guess like some of the stuff we're talking about seems like old news in other states to me, when I, you know, I read the messages here, there, and everywhere on this proposal, and it was disturbing to me that people aren't doing this. Like, to me, every three years is very generous, I, I was almost disturbed that people aren't checking their septic's every three years, or even what. You know, I think as a homeowner, I kind of joke, Andrew, I kind of joke that we're, we're starting to be in the high rent district, you know, things have changed around our lake, I wanna protect our property values, I wanna keep the lakes clean, and I, I don't want any. I don't want any raw sewage going into our lake. You, you know, I think this is very reasonable, three years is, is more than reasonable to have your septic pumped, maybe, I'm not sure about these in-depth inspections, but, but that's, that's pretty reasonable, if you ask me. You know, so that's, that's where I'm coming from the opposite side of, that side of the point, but thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
I'm Steve Patton, I'm a septic installer licensed, I'm probably one of few people who have worked on septic since the sixties. I've done commercial, so residential. The words will come. I've, I've been around some. I'm totally in favor of pumping septic tanks and keeping an eye on them, because I do know that septic tanks can cause issues, but septic tanks won't cause all the problems. Inappropriate installed fields also cause a lot of issues. Unfortunately, state inspectors don't get to see how these are installed, they only see how the finishes dump. They don't get to see the sand underneath, they don't get to see that nitrates are running into the lake. My advice would be to do some water testing below some of these. Um, I could go on and on and on, but what I would suggest is that anyone who has a clean solution system. That has been approved by the state of New Hampshire, Harry Spaulding would be the, probably the designer from AOS. They are already paying for annual inspections. Through this company, and these people are much, much brighter than most of us. What I would also suggest is if we decide to have somebody in the community or works for the department. Appearing, that he be a licensed and valued waiter, not just someone who's picked because eighty bits ago.
I have a lot more to say, but I'm gonna sit down now. Was it, did you put your head up? Yes, go ahead.
I'm Kevin Niles, uh, we have a property on Algonquin, we've had it for eight years, uh, it is a seasonal property. Um, I don't see a lot in these rules that actually addresses seasonal properties, um, it is a seasonal property with a holding tank. I see there's references to exceptions for this and that, so I, I don't actually know how this is going to impact us. We've probably spent twelve nights at this place over the span of the eight years that we've owned it. I certainly think it's unreasonable to have our holding tank pumped four times a year, which I believe I read somewhere in here. Um, so I guess what I'm really asking, and I'm not. So I guess what I'm really asking, and I'm not necessarily opposed to, you know, something, but I guess I'd like a little more details. I'd like to be a little, make sure it's more thought out. And I mean, if somebody could explain to me what you're proposing, you know, for us seasonal owners, we do pay taxes and we don't have reference-
Sir, sir. I would just like to clarify, please correct if I'm wrong, the holding tanks are entirely matters of state law.
So I can give a quick summary of the holding, there's an exception for holding tanks because of state law. And do you want to just give a quick summary of that?
Yeah. If we're still echoing, someone in this room has Teams on. I'll make sure it's turned off.
Louder.
So the holding tank exception that's written in there is copy and pasted directly from state law. So holding tanks are exempted from our rule, but the exemption that is there is the current state law that you have to pump it four times. So that would not be something that's changing on the town side. We just copied and paste what already is state law into the document.
So what you're saying is that even though this is a seasonal property that we used one time last summer, we are by law required to have that holding tank pumped four times a year?
That's what the state law says right now.
May I?
Can I, can I please finish? Does that make sense to anyone in this room? So the other thing I wanted to ask, and this is kind of unrelated, but there are so many rivers and streams that feed into all of these lakes. Why are you just targeting the people that have properties on the lake and not all the people with properties abutting these rivers and streams?
So-
Thank you, that's all I have.
Quick, quick, so the clarification proposal, the town does currently work with people with failing septic's elsewhere in town. A lot of the motivation for this particular draft proposal came out of the session on the planning board, where it was, many of the folks in the lake districts, lake areas were there and requested such a thing. And also, we had New Hampshire DES at one of our earlier meetings where they presented and made statements that the current levels in our lakes exceed the base levels that they thought deemed to be safe and that we would not be able to achieve that without regulating septic's along the lakes, lake shore fronts themselves. So that's the quick statement there. So we'll go back to the public comment there. Team, go ahead.
Team Patton, I'm the installers' wife. Anyways, I don't live on the lake and I do certainly think something, you know, something basic needs to be done. And I totally agree with septic systems being pumped every three years and not putting traction to them. But my question is, just kind of basic thing, because it impacts other things that we do in town as well. I'm wondering what is the town going to do about people who have their properties posted and the town is not able to access that property to do any sort of investigation or anything?
Yeah, we're not doing the inspections?
No, I know we're not doing the inspections.
No, they would just have to have it inspected and turned into the town.
That doesn't answer the question.
Yeah. I mean, the town is, the health officer is still going to have to access that property at some point? Not at all?
Nope.
Or we'll post a property then.
I'm Carrie Perrier. I also live on Crystal Lake. And I'm echoing Kevin Niles's comments that I do have a seasonal cottage. It's only rented two months to a retired couple. I pump it every year for them. And out of ten months of the year, it is unused and closed up. And I've read the state guidelines and it says to be pumped regularly and copies of receipts be submitted to the health officer. I pump it once a year, and like I said, for ten, ten months, it's closed up. What would you want me to submit on a quarterly basis? Nothing going into it. And I don't, I don't see where someone has said that it has to be pumped four times.
So again, for clarification, the holding tanks are exempt from this rule. This does not apply. Would you want to go ahead and-
Yeah, I'll relook into that and talk to the state a little more. But like I said, that paragraph was taken straight from the DES rules. But we're not looking-
Did the DES rules say four times a year?
It was copied word for word.
Is that what it says?
Yeah. So I'll look into that if there's an exception or somewhere that I didn't see it or it's because of amounts of little picks.
Okay, there's your hand up over there.
I'm Jim Martell. I live on Mascoma Lake. I'm in favor of this pumping idea, but I wonder if you could expand it. Instead of every three years, it could be three to five years. And that would allow the health officer to kind of use his judgment a little bit in cases where, you know, you're only there for two or three months or something and you don't use it that often. Maybe if you could extend it every five years. The other thing, on the inspection, this doesn't really define the scope of the inspection as part of this whole thing. It could be just a matter of the inspector going out there and doing the sniff test and that's the inspection. Or he goes through and he does all this other stuff that costs a lot of money. I think the extent of the inspection should be better defined.
So just to go through, so we're going to rely on industry professionals, licensed professionals to do the inspections, and we're not going to, we're not trying to micromanage what they do. If a licensed professional inspects and signs off on a system, we're going to respect that determination and they're professionals licensed by the state, so they're going to, you know, do, do their business. And the other, there is an exception in here that would allow people to apply for a longer period, should they have conditions that they want to do. Thank you very much.
All right.
All right, in the back.
I'm the Buick Mascoma Lake. When you pump a tank, you're pumping tanks to get the solids out so they don't all fill the tank and end up in these lead fields. Pumping the tank every three years, especially for what I'm hearing, mostly seasonal residents, isn't going to really, it's not going to be that many solids in it. And if you have a flooding event like at Crystal Lake, it's going to get the gray water out of the system, it's not going to get the solids. So it almost sounds like you're attacking something needlessly, that being solids. And they're sensitive. Just-
Okay, thank you. There's a hand up there in the front.
I'm Martha Rich. I live on Mascoma Lake and I'm here to, first of all, to convey the feelings of the Mascoma Lake Association Board of Directors. Our board is strongly in favor of septic regulation and we agree that a clear policy and enforcement are critical to the health of the lake. There are a couple of members of our water quality team here, who Martell just spoke, who can say more about the condition of our, of our lake water. It's remarkably healthy and we want to keep it that way. So in general, we support this draft policy as written. We particularly support the grace period that allows property owners time to get in compliance before they face that very hefty state regulated fine. And also, we support the provisions related to sale of property. I, however, am here to listen to people's concerns. I think, I know that you folks wanted to keep this as simple as possible to try it out and see how it was going to work. Appreciate that. But I'm also listening for ways that, you know, concerns people have ways that the lake associations might be able to help. In particular, if we end up all needing to conduct expensive system inspections every three years or some other interval. It may be that the lake associations can help organize, and I know some folks did this on Crystal Lake, to get an inspector to come and do multiple properties in a single day and get that cost well reduced. So that I think there are things that the associations can do to support people as these regulations go into effect. The final thing I want to say is, there's been a lot of talk about all the other reasons that a lake might have trouble, have cyanobacteria blooms, which Masoma's had, Crystalis had, and we're pretty worried about that. And there is beginning a process for a comprehensive watershed management plan, and I'm going to let Ed say more about that. Jim Martell was involved in initiating that too. And I believe that that's going to look at all those other impacts and give us much more widespread, comprehensive solutions. And I really look forward to that, and we've got the grant money to do that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Who's that?
My name is Charlie Baker. My wife and I, we live on Crystalis. We've been there about four years mostly. And I wasn't aware of any major, actually not even major, minor water quality issues with our lakes in the last one year. Last year being the exception with the excessive rains, it was incredible. The blooms that we did have were terrible. But I'm not aware, I did hear somebody say that there was a failure on Crystal Lake in the past year or something. If that's the case, I would ask somebody, are there others that have happened that we're not aware of, on Crystal Lake or Mascoma Lake for that matter? I haven't heard any evidence that this lady just said how great your water is. I know Crystal Lake, I mean, this year, what is it, spectacular. I also know that my well is between my septic system and Crystal Lake, and I test it regularly. And it is beautiful water. So I sent it off to a lab multiple times. And I just don't understand the impetus of this, why it was initiated? Is it out of fear that we're going to have a lake problem? And yet, we don't seem to have one unless, I know Mr. Green was, is here for Crystal Lake Association. I think he spoke on behalf of himself, though. But I don't know. I don't know if there's really any evidence of sewage going into our lake. And if there is, kindly tell me.
We have had other blooms within town at the various lakes over the past number of years, and the conditions that feed those blooms are trending upward. And the DES agent said that the base levels within our lakes exceed what they deem to be healthy.
But is that based on what is entering our lakes to cause it?
So that's multifaceted. And again, the DES person made the statement that we won't be able to get the levels down without addressing septic's, along with other sources of pollution. So it's going to be a multifaceted-
Into our lakes.
The DES person said that that's typically a part of how it gets into the lakes, yes. So-
Okay. But there's really no hard evidence. What I'm asking, I'd like to really know.
Well, I, from my perspective, the hard evidence is that we have been seeing blooms over the last several years within our lakes. And we have been seeing, seeing that happen. All right, let's go to the back.
Question is about the other variables. So we have some grant money to address the other variables. You know, we have lots of tributaries that feed our lake. A lot of people live along those tributaries. I feel like that we are, should not, they should not be exempt from the same regulations we are, because they can have a positive effect as well.
I'm not speculable, louder, please. I'm not everyone team here.
Sorry.
Thank you.
So I think that my other question is, is if you're, if we're pushing forward quickly to put into effect these regulations for septic systems, then equitatively, other variables should be put into effect as quickly. So not take years to deal with stormwater runoff, but just as quickly. And is the town able to do that?
The town's working on those problems as well, including the stormwater management plan and working on runoff and how we deal with a lot of things on, you know. We're working on them, but yes, it takes time. It takes time. Actually, I'm sorry, I think this person's other hand and I can't quite see them.
Barry Schuster, Goodwin Road on Mascoma Lake. And I support you making an effort to get the lakes clean. I think it's really, really important, but I think the penalties are excessive. I mean, if someone can't afford to pump, why would you fine them a thousand dollars, which you're never going to collect any maintenance? The city, the town also has a very robust GIS system. You should have on, and you have your tax cards, we have a whole lot of information. You should have an inventory of every single property along lakes, even rivers, and start putting in records of where they have their septic systems and when it was pumped. When I moved into my place on Mascoma Lake, after three months, the fifty gallon tank started overflowing. Okay, that was the first septic system I replaced. Now I've got, starting on May twenty eighth of this year, a brand new system. Julie Huntley has the record from the state. My wife and I live there four months a year. I think the Son of the Ordinance has a very good exception for two people or less and for seasonal people. I mean, there's no reason for me to be pumping every three years. It's a brand new system. It's the newest system in town. And frankly, I think that there should be some accommodation for that in the ordinance. I mean, I was on the Enfield Sewer Advisory Committee in nineteen eighty-one. We've come a long way from that. And I think what you're doing is right, but you're using a sledgehammer to try to accomplish something. And you could be much more data collecting and data sensitive to get records of all the systems, and then you'll start with the worst ones, work your way up. And frankly, there should be a loan fund to help people pay for it. Thank you.
Roger Einville and I live on Spectacle Pond and celebrating thirty-one years there. Full-time resident, nobody's said anything about Spectacle Pond. And I have a couple of comments. First of all, I, being a former House member representing the great town of Enfield, I have a little bit more inroads than other people. And I talked directly with DES. And DES said they had no issues with their system. I talked to a representative from Sonope. He said their program works for theirs, for them, and that works great. I also have a concern with the fact, and we, we swim in the pond and Spectacle Pond probably has the best water of any of the lakes around here. And I swim in it, and I sure don't want to swim in a lake that has sewage. And like Jim over, or whoever I heard over here, my septic is above my well. And trust me, I would know right away when my septic goes, because my water is going to taste like the same thing. I was also, remember the Public Water Access Advisory Board when I was in the State House? They have no issues with the way the state handles it. And they, and I cruised around Lake Winnipesaukee looking at million dollar houses and camps that I'm sure is seasonal. And I have no problem, we pump our septic every three years, there's only the two of us, and for us to get it inspected, my question is, we share part of Spectacle Pond with Grafton. Now, and, and I don't, I'm not going to say anything there, but I can't imagine they're lining up to have inspections and all kinds of stuff to go on over there. And Masoma shares part of it with Lebanon. And who's to say, because I was sitting there in my sunroom watching the water just blowing back and forth, who's to say that the sinovirus came from here or there? And if we're mandating that our people have it pumped, and I'm sure, I see a few people on Spectacle here, and I know we pump it, and the people who came in knew how to get brand new ones, plus they had to get it inspected by the state because it was a transfer of property. So I agree that this is an overreach. And if you, you know, you don't throw the baby out with the bath water, and that seems to be what the case is here. There's, Chris, Crystal Lake had a problem, and our water last year was a foot over our dock. I was watching it float away. And we had no sinovirus in our, in our water. So it's the rivers, it's people who we can't control, it's the variables, it's a double in the details, and I don't think the details are sufficient enough for this to continue.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Ed Rippey. I live on Crystal Lake. And I appreciate all the efforts that are going in by the Select Board and by the town of Enfield for keeping all the splaining. I live right on Crystal Lake, and I'm thankful that we're addressing these things. I agree with most of what's in here. However, there are a couple of things I have to disagree with. The other issue, before I get to that, is I want to say that the biggest issue is the runoff by far. It's like 80% of the problem. We're talking about septic systems, which could be 5%, 10%, whatever percent of the problem. But they're a problem, and they need to be addressed. And I think, I have no problem with pumping every three years. I got the second new system. So I know it's going to be approved, and I know it's going to be okay. And I will pump it every three years if that's going to keep our lake clean. As far as inspections, if we have new systems being put in, and they're supposed to be good for 40 years, why the hell are we inspecting them every three years? If it's inspected once, you don't have to inspect it every three years. I think that could be a little lucid. And the other thing is, I agree with what you said about the penalties. This, the way this is written, the penalty thing, that's insane. $1,000 a day in one month, that's the cost of a whole brand-new septic system. The penalty thing should be strictly. I don't know what New London's, I haven't read New London's policy. I think I understand that you don't want to have penalties. But I know penalties are important because you want to make sure things get fixed.
I can make a quick comment on that. That's another cut and paste on state law. That's what they say it is. And it isn't up to, and certainly it's the intent of the town to not try to collect fees, to work with people. And as long as people are working towards a solution, there's no intention of collecting penalties. But that is the language from the state law.
So can you add that statement into that penalty clause that says if somebody is working on the system, then there's a mine's left?
That can be considered.
That would be a good change for that.
Thank you.
Can you repeat that, please? Can you repeat what he said that you agreed with?
He suggested that a change could be made to that, and I said that that could be considered. Because after this public hearing, the board will consider everything that we've heard before taking any action. So I can't agree to do something, but I can agree to consider something.
Am I done?
Oh.
So am I done?
You're at 2:48, you got a little second.
Oh, my God.
You're doing great.
That's just pressure. And I just wasted six of them. I think, well, I think we need to do something, but we need to be very careful about what we do. Because this, everybody out there, we live by this, and we want to get it right. We want to get it right and make sure that everybody feels comfortable with it.
Thank you very much.
No service here, so I had to take new notes. Justin Murray, I live on George Pond. I have issues with the named water bodies, mainly because of the sale of properties. There's a new New Hampshire state bill that names like Mascomah River and Cole Pond, which is not that appropriate. Mascomah River, I don't know if our town sewer water is going all the way out on that, but I kayak it, swim it. No one swims George Pond, and I don't think it has a cyanobacteria problem because there's, I don't know if it went up 250 feet. I don't know the definition of where a septic system starts and ends. But I had my septic system inspected in 2020. When I bought the house, it was $500-plus then, and it was very intensive detail. And like, I don't think I need the camera, map it, know everything about it to know if it's working or not. I can walk in the front lawn. But, so, I am okay with pumping and inspection, but I do think it should be use-based. And it's been five years. We're going to do it this next summer. Five-year schedule is kind of what's recommended. But I think it should be based on the number of bedrooms, size of the system, so that there's an incentive for someone to install a system appropriate size. If I had to replace my system, I probably should put the smallest tank I can put in there. Because if I do every three years, it would be appropriate for two people living it. I think the town should negotiate lower rates, similarly to Crystala, that we do with wastewater pickup. If I'm not in the lake community, I'm going to be left out. It's going to cost me $700 for inspection. And I think, again, there should be like a 10- or 20-year new system. You don't need the inspection because these things are really modern. It would incentivize a new system to people. Because it probably is a handful of properties with 50-year-old, 60-year-old systems that are drywelled, or it goes somewhere we don't know where. That's probably causing much of the problem if it's not just the runoff. And again, we could expand town sewer water up George Hill. I know there's people in this room that live up George Hill, and that could be a public use. I pay $9,000 a year, and I would love for it to hook up, so. And the Knox River runs from my house between the two, and this house there that's not named as a water body. So just those facts, I don't love it as written because of how simple it is, $1,000 ordinance. We're not going to collect the fine. The exceptions are vague. In three to five years, based on what? I'd really like to see all the details and not a very short ordinance. Thank you.
I just want to make clear, this $1,000 fine, I want to give you the exact wording, a civil forfeiture not to exceed $1,000 for each day. It would be a dollar. Just can't exceed a thousand.
For folks who haven't spoken yet.
I can't hear you, Eric.
Don't give me orange, Martha.
I'm just curious about anybody who has an old cottage, who has had their septic, oh, sorry. My name is Susan Smith, and I live on Crystal Lake. I'm just curious about people who have owned cottages for years, and there's like four generation cottages in my neighborhood. And what happens when their septic tank or their folding tank or whatever gets inspected, and they don't pass? Then what happens? How much time? I don't get any details off your whole program here. And I'm really frustrated in the fact that this is being pushed on us. We are not being allowed to vote on any of this because you're calling it an alpazis. And I'm just really unhappy that this is, the way this is being handled by this board. And I would like to know what's going to happen to the people whose septic systems are in failure and are told that they won't pass inspection. And then who's helping them pay? Well, you said the town would come up with some money. Yeah. The town has helped people with their septic systems. You did say that.
The town has helped people work through the process of replacing septic systems, which can be complicated. And Ed, would you like to just sort of address how the town would?
Yeah, it can be complicated. It could be time-consuming. We understand that. And, you know, we've worked with people, we continue to work with people right now, not on water bodies, but outside the town that have the same problem. We work through it with them. If they don't, if they can't financially afford it, we can work with USDA and other funding sources to help get some government money to help finance them. And so there's just, there's a multitude of different ways we can work through it. There's no way we could actually identify every way in an ordinance or regulation. But we do work with people on an everyday basis on septic systems, on building code violations, and all those different types of things.
So I would like to know where the details are in your program that are going to allow people whose systems fail. How long do they have to get it fixed? How much money do you expect them to put in a new system? Like, my neighbor is really concerned it might cost them $50,000 to put in a new system if theirs doesn't pass. A lot of these cottages don't have any extra land to put in a leak shield. All they have is a septic tank. So what is the guidelines? And where are you going to put in, and when are you going to put in all these details? So all of us know exactly what is going to be happening to us. Okay?
My name is Martha Barnes. We live in Mascomah Lake. And we were here at the time that the lady from New Hampshire, the ES, spoke. And I know that's a concern, and she presented her opinion. But like the gentleman here, I ask, has any nuisance or injury to public health caused by any existence to which this post of system in our lake has been identified? Is there scientific evidence that it's the septic system causing the problem? Or are we just trying to avoid the problem that hasn't happened? And I can see prevention. But we pump our tank every three, every three years. We don't leave here year-round. We're seasonal. So we take care of that, but the inspection, we believe that's excessive when there's no scientific evidence that this is a problem. And then my other question, when someone said about Lebanon, what's going to happen with the Lebanon people? Enfield has the rule, but Lebanon doesn't? And then they can go freely without inspections, without pumping whenever? And, but Enfield has to? How's that going to affect the lake?
You're on sewage. You're on the town system.
Again, I'm professing people address the board, and we not have across the room conversations. Thank you.
Oh, and I'm not sure, but I wanted to ask, why is Goose Pond not included? Is there any reason?
Goose Pond's not in Enfield.
Oh, okay. So like I said, I want to emphasize, the DES gave their recommendation. But I'd like them to present scientific proof, you know? Why do we have to go through this excessive process of inspection when it really is not necessary?
Thank you.
I don't, Linda McFaker, I don't have anything to ask you, except since we're all standing up and speaking out, I think if you are capable or able, stand. We can't hear you any better than we can hear each other when you speak unless you are used to public speaking, which means this. So everybody here wants to hear what you have to say and wants to hear what everyone else has to say. So speak up. So people have naturally good speaking voices, so you understand what they say no matter what the volume. But most people don't, and some people are shy. However, everyone has something that someone else wants to hear. So speak up, please. Stand up, please. And thank you very much for having this meeting.
Thank you. I'll try to improve on that. Dan in the back.
Hi, my name is Dan Regan. I live on Locky of Crystal Lake. I really appreciate all the different points of view that have been presented tonight. I actually think this is great. Select Board, the town manager, and others have been at this for about four months. But it's nice to see this many people together. As the people that know that have been participating for the last four months, I'm strongly in favor of this for a number of different reasons. And I won't belabor all the points I've made over the previous three months. You're welcome. I would just say that the New Hampshire Lakes Association, the DES, independent engineering firms that focus in environmental issues, they all align, as did a governor's advisory board that he put together on cyanobacteria. They all align in that we need to inspect and we need to maintain our septic system. The reason being, the causes of cyanobacteria, one reason is, the causes of cyanobacteria, one of the things is phosphorus. The causes of phosphorus are multifactorial. You hear people talking about the runoff, and that is absolutely a problem. The number that they show from scientific research is about 60% of our phosphorus comes from runoff. And it's closer to 20%, less than 20%, that it comes from septic systems. But we can't not look at septic systems because it's something that we can do something about very, very quickly. And it's not just the cyanobacteria that septic systems are contributing to. They're also contributing to bacteria in E. coli. And yes, high levels of bacteria have been seen in Crystal Lake. So we're thinking that we have a crystal, Crystal Lake. We don't. And over the years, it has gotten worse. So a couple of the points I want to make, one being very interesting, the last week in August, the governor held an executive council meeting. I don't know how often he does these things, but this particular meeting, he stood up and he said, you know what? I think we do a terrible job, DES, of talking about cyanobacteria. It's not toxic. And a couple of people in the room said, what? What are you talking about? So there's an investigative reporter, she's an environmental reporter, might be more after the title. Her name is Clara Sullivan. And she went out and she did some research, and she published the research. And she started by talking to some folks at Dartmouth. And she talked to Jessica Bolentro, a tragic name. But she's an aquatic ecologist at Dartmouth College who studies cyanotoxins. And what Ms. [inaudible] said, excuse me?
About 15 seconds.
Are you kidding me?
Nope.
After seconds. What she said was, the cyanotoxins can cause rash, fevers, headache, mouth blisters, vomiting, acute liver damage, and long-term exposure can harm liver and central nervous systems. They also kill pets. We're not talking about something that's a nuisance. We're talking a public health emergency here. We need to address this. And that's why I applaud the Select Board for sticking with it, the town manager, the health officer. And I've got more that she has with other people.
Okay, thank you. Right next to Dan. Yep, yeah, right there, right next to you.
Dr. Wendy Eastman. I'd like to clarify something, and to answer the question, that everyone here is in favor of healthy septic. I mean, that should be clear. The people who have stood to address their concerns are still in favor of healthy septic systems. And I think we just want to be careful not to characterize if there's an opposition, that is, that there are people who are for this rule and people who are against it. That's not the case at all. That's not the case at all. The issues that people are raising are issues that they have with some of the specifics. And I can tell you, as I told folks on our Crystal Lake Facebook page, I've spoken with at least two professionals in the field, that is licensed people, who are concerned that these specific requirements do not follow the science. And that has to do with issues like the, you know, the frequency of inspections, a lot of the issues that have been taken up here. Now, Dan, you cite amassed, they are, did you say something?
We'll address the board.
Okay, sorry, no. Earlier, earlier, we heard a comment about amassed data, okay, aggregate data, which is data that is from New Hampshire lakes in general, okay? The septic systems, you know, contribute to toxicity in New Hampshire lakes generally. But some of the people here are speaking to the specifics of our lakes and what needs to be done. And some people are concerned about how aggressive your Enfield septic rule is in comparison to other towns. And express some concerns about some of the specific components. And I would suggest, as other folks have, that a more planful process, more thoughtful than advisory board getting this right, as has also been pointed out, and including some folks like licensed local inspectors and pumperers and someone with the likes of John Essler, who's just received a lifetime achievement award in wastewater management. Just kind of broaden your advisory board beyond this local group. And I mean this local group, including local resident group.
Okay, thank you very much.
Ernest Tyler, part of Enfield my whole life.
Hey, Ernest Tyler, part of Enfield my whole life, resident for forty years, part-time resident for the last whatever. I don't say, but long enough. I, I'm with everybody else. I think that there's a need to protect our resources here and I think the lake, you know, needs to be protected. You know, I think that, you know, your, you know, percentages and stuff like that, I, I don't disagree with any of it. I think to me, the burden is for a lot of property owners that can't take the burden on of what you're asking them to pay. And have, have we even considered expanding the source system around one of our major resources here? Where we can get people to tap into the source system and not have the chance of a failure on the septic system. And I think that if, I understand that this is something you can take, you can attack quickly. But my fear is the people that are having a failure probably is because they can't afford to fix it. So I would really consider, I'd like to see maybe a little bit more, of course, also on the runoff situation because I think that, as stated, I think phosphorus from fertilizer, things like that are causing as much damage to our lakes as, as the few said, failing septic system. But and again, I, I'm here now just part-time and I, I hang out every year, a few years, depending on how much time I spend here. And I don't have a problem with it. I think it's important that we make sure that we have things protected. But I think I, we're talking about a problem's been in existence for a number of years that now we want to satisfy quickly just on the septic tank issue. And I think that it'd be nice if we could hear the alternative of if you don't have a septic tank, we can help, you know, either is there some state funding that they could, you could get, you know, loans from people that live near the lake. Many people can afford to spend thirty or fifty thousand on their septic, but there are probably many more that can't. And my, my feeling is going to be that when those studies come out, there's going to be far more failures and with people that can't afford it.
I'm Becky French. I live out on Crystal Lake. My grandparents, we've owned where I live since the early nineteen sixties. My grandparents moved, went, bought a camp out there in the late fifties and winterized it was, were the fourth year-round property on the whole lake. When we started going out there in the early sixties, like most camps on the lake, if you want to drink a water, you go and turn on your tap from the water that was being pumped right out of Crystal Lake. And I want to know how many of you would do that today? Probably not a lot of us. So I agree that something does need to be done. I am not opposed to what is, what, what you're trying to do. I do have some concerns that it is not a Crystal Lake, Mascoma Lake spec pond problem. There are also other brooks and streams and why are houses within two hundred and fifty feet of those not being included? And, you know, if I, if I'm going to be included, I, I just don't find the rationale for not including somebody whose house is literally twenty feet from a brook. Okay, when I'm set back, what, a hundred feet? I, I just don't, I just don't. I think that a three-year pumping is not excessive. That's what I do anyway. But I think that inspections, you know, I, I'm, I think that there needs to be a more easing into that part of it. And not just, here it is, people, and everybody has to do it today or last week.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. Making sure we get everybody who hasn't spoken yet. So right here.
My name is Joanne Gradigen and I live on Crystal Lake. And I'd like to know if you're doing this as the Board of Health or you're doing it as the Board of Selectmen? You have put on this draft that RSA forty-eight A two gives municipalities the authority to adopt codes, regulations from ordinances to cause repair of unhealthy or hazardous conditions in dwellings, including unhealthy sanitary facilities or any violation of other health and safety regulations. If you go back to forty-eight A three, it states that selectmen and town managers and members of the governing bodies of cities are ineligible for membership on these boards. So if you are considered yourself the Board of Health, you can't be.
That's not correct.
I can look in that more, but no, the Select Board is the default Board of Health.
Yeah.
If there's not another.
And I would just say, when this happened during COVID, right? Pronouncement by the state that the Select Board was the Board of Health. And I said, whoa, I don't need to be on another board. I don't think any of us did like you default into it. There are things that the state signs you up for and we do that activity.
But this was written in two thousand twenty-three.
I can look into it. Other folks that haven't spoken yet.
Shannon and Jeremy Wallis were on Shaker Boulevard on Mascoma Lake. And we are there seasonally about three months a year. And obviously we want clean water for the most part. The New Hampshire lakes thing, what to do with your septic system. We pretty much do most, if not all of them already. We don't do our laundry here. We don't ever use bleach and, but we do, so we want clean water, but we also have concerns.
Yes, so, I'm also, and so I would propose the Board that they adopt a ordinance more like the Lake Septic Ordinance. Whereas pump every three years, that seems reasonable. If you want to.
You gotta speak up.
Sorry, if you want to get people to change their behavior, you can, you know, you propose penalties, but you can also provide incentive. So if we say pump our, or try to get our system inspected every three years, perhaps we could uh, put that towards a tax credit or probably a credit toward her.
Please, please stay silent. We're listening to this gentleman.
So that's just the option. So another question is, what happens when your inspection fails? And there, there are two ways we could fail. The, the system could not be functioning. And there's also, it could not meet state standards. So within this abstract ordinance, I don't see sort of a clear definition, what happens between those two types of failure and then what happens if it does fail me. I don't actually see anywhere in here what happens if it does fail or this, as long as I get inspected. Like, I feel like if I'm meeting the ordinance. And then beyond that, what happens if our properties that's not have enough that doesn't, it strains so much that it cannot meet state standard, then what happens?
Well, I can address the last part, but the D E S health rules do state that no, you know, you're able to replace your system as it's replaced and they're not going to instill any standards that makes a change of use. So that means you won't lose your house if you can't put in a full system. But there are systems that can go in a very small location and, you know, we're willing to, to work with people to do that. I also don't believe you're going to, you'll see some, but you're not going to see a lot of them just oops, you're in complete failure. For the most part, it's going to be, hey, you need to upgrade this part of your system or this isn't working right. So you'll, you'll start to get information to keep your system working right. Not as much of a pass fail, but there will probably be some that have failed.
So I hear a lot of people, Bill Griffin, Crystal Lake. I hear a lot of people saying they're going to pump every three years and get their septic's pumped. But how do we know if it's going into the lake without an inspection? So if we don't get inspected at some point, we don't know if it's going into the lake or not. And just because somebody's nice or they lived there a long time, they're almost seasonal. That doesn't mean I still want your crap going into the lake. We need to get them inspected to figure out where we stand with them and address it and go from there.
Yeah, right, right here in the, no, we'll just work our way back. It's right here in the back.
My name is Brad Goldens. I'm new to the area about sixteen months now. I come from the People's Republic of Massachusetts. Title five, just really put a thing down there. I recently sold property. Hadn't had it pumped, but I'm able to keep an eye on it. I'm going to do a couple of full circles here. And the gentleman came out to pump it. It is part of what requires before sale. And since we've got to get a water front site assessment before sale in order to sell, one small point is I think that the septic inspection should be by the seller, not by the buyer right afterwards, because then you're kind of buying an unknown thing of goods that could have a forty, fifty, sixty, even a hundred thousand dollar implication if it had failed somehow in that three-year period from the last time it was inspected. I'm a civil engineer by trade. I used to be in charge of Texas Instruments' second largest plant, the wastewater effluent into nearby streams and lakes. And did some pretty heavy stuff back in the day. There is absolutely an issue up here. I wanted to speak kind of towards the end because I'm new and I wanted to hear the wisdom of the other residents. I still have not heard what I thought would be the biggest thing that would come out tonight. I hope I don't push my three minutes. Problem in this valley has been unknown since two thousand eight. I discovered this part of my property search. Mascoma Valley, here's the map by the National Institute of Health that has commissioned the study in two thousand eight based on a great number of people coming down with Lou Gehrig's disease, ALS. They then commissioned a five-year federal study. The federal study was printed in two thousand fourteen. Basically, it shows that the Mascoma Valley is among the most dangerous areas in all of northern New England. The red areas are the dangerous areas, St. John's Breeze also. So something absolute, and this is available off the website, in the publication section of the NIH. And so this guided my search to arrive up here at Spectacle Pond and rejecting Crystal with all due respect and rejecting Mascoma. The problem is in the lower valley. It's a problem that needs to be addressed. But as others have said here tonight, sixty percent of the runoff and the phosphorus concentration comes from the streams. Comes from the factories. In seconds. And so I may have to come back up again. And but what's happening is a blanket solution to the most targetable groups that are identifiable by a property map around each of the lakes. When sixty percent is coming from elsewhere. So the town needs to take a much more considered approach to this whole thing. Not just unless we're the ones that are going to fund all the other ones, it would pay. So I still have an issue. This is an uneven regulation. It's too broad brush. It needs a great deal more refinement and, and I will hope for a second opportunity to talk.
Thank you.
My name's Gary Shepherd. I live on Crystal Lake Road. And last year it was, we had heavy rains. I want to inquire as to what you're going to do to people living up on Lock Haven, Boys Camp Road, all of that runoff that this gentleman is expressing, coming down into our lake. And you're not going to stop that. And it's not all about septic systems. There is a lot of runoff coming out that hill.
Yes, it's a multi-passed problem. This is.
I mean, it literally washed out on El Gonquin Road, a septic system. That's all, that's all he got.
It was not septic, at least on Leach Field.
Well, it washed out.
Please address the board. Please, please address the board.
That's how much water was coming up in that hill. So if you're going to get on us, you're going to do something about those people up there too.
Thank you for that. All right, more folks. Okay, I'm not trying to ignore you, but I'm trying to get to everybody. We still have folks online. So, so people who have not spoken yet in the back.
So back to tanks. Now, you're referencing state guidelines. Is the town applying those penalties or is it the state?
The, the town would be applying penalties.
Does that mean we're in double jeopardy then? Because they also have the ability to apply those fine conditions of failure.
They do, but we'll be working with D E S if it gets to that, that state. But the, I mean, the state could if it's in total failure and people are not working to fix their system.
All I want to add is.
Oh, I know. What's, I, I didn't catch your name. Did you say your name for those?
Sir, Kendall on Crystal.
Okay, thank you.
And the second is the point of having some grace period to work towards compliance. New Hampshire lakes, they, they introduced health bill one-one-one-three, later became law. The final version of that has written in it grace periods. Hundred and eighty days and a possible extension of three hundred and sixty under certain conditions. So I just want to say that I, I think the penalty section is very alarming and would love to see some more language in that area that addresses some of the verbal comments you're mentioning about working with people. Because it comes off very compelling as it's written.
Okay, thank you. Thanks to somebody else. Yeah, go ahead.
George Pond, you have in here two hundred and fifty foot setback on the buffer zone. Where's the buffer zone on George Pond, where the other lakes are or less than? I don't know, though, in the spring, but you have all the extra small area going out a lot further. I was just curious what the buffer zone was.
The buffer zone would follow, no, no problem. I appreciate you coming and asking. The buffer zone would be as defined by the state under the lake shore protection laws. So whatever the state does for their lake shore, that's what would be the applied lake shore here.
I don't know something, I don't know any something at the moment.
I believe there is one that is set for George Pond.
It'd be the high water. I don't do all this fine line stuff and all that. I just sound out about it. Do you have to know? So I don't know if you sent letters out to people that wanted to probably, whether these lakes are not. I don't know if there's anybody else, just me.
Other folks in the room who have not spoken yet, please raise your.
I'm Sarah Mercer. I've been, I'm friends with Enfield. We've been on Crystal Lake since nineteen seventy-eight. I think this is a great proposal in that we need to do something to make sure that septic's are not failing and going. I do think three years is excessive. I think based on use, five to ten years is generally recommended. I think three years is, is too, is too restrictive. But I would be very much in favor of something that was a five-year, you know, you have to have it inspected and pumped. And once it's inspected, I don't think it has to be every five years that it's inspected. I think that there has to be something that this inspector can say or improve through a letter that says the system is, you know, sufficient for the next ten years, especially if it was installed recently in the last ten, twenty, thirty years, only as a forty-year lifespan. The other thing that I liked about this gentleman said is I think there has to be a grace period of some sort to let people understand what's just happened to them. How are they going to rectify the situation? You know, if there's an issue with finances, cannot be extended, you know, so they can adjust. Because I do think if you have septic on a waterway, you do need to make sure that it's not going into the lake. I mean, we have an alarm on our reception system that I'm afraid, I don't ever want to hear that alarm because it is so, it will hurt your ears so badly. You just never want to hear that sound. So we're religious about pumping our system on every five years. And we use our property seasonally. So I like what Bill said about the fact that if you don't know where there's a problem, you can fix it. So they should be inspected. But then I don't think you have to pump it every three years if you're not using the thing either on a regular basis. But then I don't think you have to pump it every three years if you're not using the things either on a residential base. So I think there's like, there's definitely something needs to be done, but it can't seem excessive or restrictive for people that are having like troubles financially. But then how do you give them a little bit of the way?
Surely agree. As I sit here tonight, it reminds me of a meeting several years ago when myself and my husband worked with DES to prepare a rough draft of a watershed management plan. And it was the same thing. There was so much pushback. They thought it was too much regulation. And it didn't go anywhere because there was so much public input, lake people, how to leave. They didn't want to do this to protect their lake. Now people realize just how much the fast stormwater runoff has on the lake. And I'm working hard now to probably get another watershed management plan. And I hopefully get a different input from the community. And I hope that you will think about both of these plans and think about protecting your lake. And think about, it's just so important. We have a responsibility to protect that lake. There's one system that isn't working. It's polluting our lake. And it's going to make it so that we can't swim in it. It's going to make it so people won't want to buy land. They will want our taxes, the value. We are valuable to the whole town because we provide a lot of the economic value to this town. Just think about it. Protect your lake.
Is there anyone else in the room right here?
Sue Young. I live on Maskoma. First of all, thank you to the board and everybody here for putting so much time and effort into this subject. It's a very important one. I live on the lake. It's a privilege to live on the lake. And you have a responsibility, an added responsibility by living on the lake. Now, I'm in favor of the recommendations, but not all of them. I think, as Espen said tonight, we can ease back on some of it, give a little more time. But I think the people who may be some of the biggest problems in this are not in this room. I think they are not attending meetings. They don't care. They're going to do what they're going to do and go their merry way. I do have a question for either you or Ed. If you have a state inspection and it fails, it's on state records that your system has failed, correct?
Yeah, if it's in total failure.
And the state, not so much Enfield, but the state is the one that follows up with a homeowner, correct?
We start with our help officer. No matter whether it's on the lake or not, a septic failure is a help officer issue and they work with the homeowner to rectify the situation.
But the state does get involved. It's not just.
If needed.
If needed, okay. Well, in any, in any case, I just think that we can modify certain parts of this. But if we put it off and put it off and say there's not a problem, we're going to end up with a huge problem. And it's better to start with some preventative measures than all of a sudden have to deal with a crisis. That's all I have to say.
Hi, my name is Crystal Lake. I have a question for the board. Do you know if Lebanon is doing anything at all about their part, their residents that live on Meskoma? Are they participating or starting to look at anything that those homeowners on the lake but in the town of Lebanon on Enfield can contribute? Like, would they come up with some of these ordinances or whatnot where it's their drinking water?
I think one of the realities is that the majority of the Lebanon residents who live on the lake are connected to the septic system that goes, the sewer system that goes into Lebanon. So it's only those living on the other side of the lake in the Lebanon area, which is relatively very few. Yeah, but Lebanon is leading the watershed management plan grant. So they are a part of the bigger conversation going on. Other folks who have not spoken yet. All right, you got one right here.
Hi, my name is Sarah Spencer and I live on Meskoma Lake. And I'm a year-round resident for nine years. And when we first came to the lake, I had felt a very strong feeling that I wanted to be a steward of our property. So we did make a plan and we have tried very hard to make some changes that would be advantageous for the town and for the lake. And I've tried hard to participate in a few things. But I think we all have a different, come from a little different space or have tried a little different way of dealing. And I think since we came, I was very concerned about our septic system. So we started by pumping it out every single year. It is near, fairly near the water. And I was concerned about the pollution. I did it every single year and every year that it was done, I was told by the person that did it for us that it was working fine and it was a really good idea and that I probably didn't need to do it every year. But he knew it made me feel better, probably made his pocketbook feel better. So I have done it every year since we moved in. And about halfway, I thought, well, let's look into getting a new septic system and see what the possibilities are. And for our property, nothing perks. Nothing perks anywhere, really. And in investigating with some neighbors and other people that had done things, it came back to me that a really acceptable system that we possibly put in would be a hundred thousand dollars. And we are retired. And, and I'm not in any way saying we can't afford to do what's necessary. But I think that a lot of people that are here have very different problems with their septic systems. And I, I think a more flexible situation. I do think that if everybody's inspected, everybody should have to follow regulations and do what we can to protect our lake. But I think that also individual situations really need to be taken into, into account because there are really a lot of very different ways people are trying to do.
Thank you. All right, last vote for new comments. I think both of you have spoken. All right, so we're going to go online and I'm going to struggle more with seeing the names on there.
Audrey.
Audrey Hartman. Can you unmute yourself and make your comment, please? Audrey Hartman, can you unmute yourself and make your comment, please?
Hold on.
There you go. We can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, so here we go. Sorry about the technical issues. So I'm Audrey Hartman. I live on Crystal Lake. I'm a seasonal resident. First, I wanted to say that I appreciate all the work that the board and the Crystal Lake Association is doing. I think the reason that we're attracted to Crystal Lake is, you know, is because the health of the lake. A number of people have questioned about, is there a need to do anything about it now? And other people have mentioned that there are some data that suggests that, that, you know, this is a reasonable approach. What I would suggest is that there be a centralized data site, you know, that says, you know, this is why we need to do this. These are what the E coli readings are and these are what the phosphorus readings are. And, you know, that it just be a link on the town of Enfield's website. In terms of the, of the draft here, a number of people have mentioned that the penalties and the timing and the grace period take into, take into the limits, you know, can be pretty draconian, you know, a thousand dollars a day. And that that isn't necessarily the intention of the board. But so maybe that could be fleshed out, you know, that as it is in some of the other towns' proposals, you know, that for this period of time, you know, it's a dollar a day, you know, a hundred dollars a month or whatever. You know, that you're saving the a thousand dollars a day for those egregious situations. A number of people have mentioned that this could be hardship for some people to afford to make those modifications. And you, someone mentioned that there are a couple grants and that maybe the USDA funding might be helpful. Maybe we could apply for grants, you know, as a group that would offset the interest on loans that people could apply for. And, you know, I'm a retired physician. I'm happy to help with grant writing if that's, if those things are applicable. But I do think that there should be, that we should strive to get a pool of money, you know, to help offset for those people that find this difficult to do in a short timeframe. You know, we ourselves had contacted multiple contractors that were on that major list of approved contractors to do septic work. And we had lead times between three and six months to get the, our septic system.
About ten, ten more seconds for the three minutes. Go ahead.
So I would request that the town of Enfield have a modified list of those inspectors that are available locally and in a timely fashion. And thank you again.
Thank you very much. All right, David Kelman, please unmute yourself and make your comments.
Hello, my name is David Kelman. I live on Meskoma Lake. I also want to thank the board for all the work you've done. What I've heard in the last hour and a half is complete agreement from everybody that we want to keep the lakes clean. Nobody has said we shouldn't allow our lakes to stay clean. So what I also have heard is the word overreach and sledgehammer as used to describe what is being proposed. Personally, I believe that the three-year inspection is completely reasonable. It's what has been recommended by several different people, from the installer to the people who have been pumping it out over the last twenty years. However, I think that initially, all systems should get inspected. So you have a baseline and you have the information, the data that the town can keep track of. But after that, I would hope that the board would consider lengthening the three-year for the inspection. There've been a lot of objections from people about that, about whether it's necessary. So I would hope that the board would consider extending that to perhaps every six years having inspections and have the three years for the pumping out. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Heidi Sidley, please unmute yourself and make your comment.
Thanks, I'm Heidi Sidley. I'm on Holly Drive. I agree with the majority of, of the regulations and I do feel septic oversight's important. I think there needs to be an exemption for new and relatively new septic systems, as the gentleman just stated, for inspections. I also feel that a strong simultaneous focus on the runoff solution needs to be addressed by the town. Extension of these rules, whatever they end up being, shouldn't just apply to the lake. They should be run up the watershed and fur butters on the streams that come down into the lakes. And I think there should be some clear guidance in some shape or form around what happens when a system fails for timing, assistance with funding and things like that. And then also how the thousand-dollar fine gets applied uniformly and non-discriminatory across people that fall into that bucket. Those are my comments.
Thank you very much. Mike Hurt, please unmute yourself and make your comment.
Thank you. I'm Mike Hurt. I live on Algonquin Road, Crystal Lake. I just have to say I do not agree with the proposed septic rules as written. Like many have spoken, I think they're overzealous and kind of punitive in their intent and nature. I ask the board to reconsider a more reasonable and incremental approach. I care about the lake very much and my neighbors and I understand they're, they're wanting to be a clean, healthy lake. I just think these regulations have not been written correctly and are very draconian. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. All right, Bob Cusick, please unmute yourself and make your comment.
Yeah, hi. I'd just like to say that as you look around, you look at the board, you look at the town manager, you know, the people that are, you know, going to make these decisions. Nobody's going to try to hurt the residents of the town. They're all going to be given sufficient time to take advantage of whatever it is that the town can afford them to correct their situations. This is not a chance for the town to hurt the residents. It's important that we take care of our lakes because the value of all of our properties depend on the, on the quality of the water in the lakes. We have three properties on the lake that all have substantial age on the septic. So I feel most certainly that at least one of them's going to require remedial action. So all of you who think that the town is going to hurt you, you're wrong. They're going to try to do as much as they can to make sure that these issues are solved to make you and everybody else in town happy with this decision. That's all.
Thank you. Ned Wright, please unmute yourself and make your comment.
Yes, I believe the board has in writing my comments about the regulation.
You have a lot of feedback on your computer and we cannot understand you. Something is causing feedback on your end.
I don't know how to address that by back away from my. One suggestion. Perhaps a requirement that people pump their systems year one and have an inspection year one. But let the inspection force determine what the interval should be for future pumpings and for future inspections. That could be a more incremental and database way of proceeding.
Thank you.
I will add that Ned, his first comment was about the letter that he provided and we did send each of the board members, this highlighted red and green comments.
Yes. Dave Buffay, please unmute yourselves and make your comment.
Hello, David Fay, Maple Street. Shortly after we moved into town, we were required to hook into the sewer system that was being put in at the start of that process. There was no option of opting out. And everybody in the central district had to do it just, just as we did. I have lived here for over forty years and certainly use the lake a lot. It's, it's very meaningful that it be kept clean and as possible as well as the Crystal Lake or the other, the other lakes and ponds in, in the, in the town. To me, it's, it's, it's an important part of why I am here and have been here for this long. There may be some modifications as suggested to make things less onerous early on and incremental. But it needs to be done promptly. And I agree with the, the speakers who had said. And I agree with the, the, the speakers who had said that other property owners who, um, abut or are near, uh, wetlands and streams uh, should also be subject to similar, uh, requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Carol and John, please unmute yourself and make your comment.
Um, hi, this is Carol Kraus, I live on Crystal Lake. I want to, um, make two points. One is that I would like to see that the process and the product of this change are considered to be fair. So it's my understanding that this board has been considering this change for the last three to four months. I would hope that you would use the same level of urgency when you're considering more important issues like the watershed runoff issues, which are, have been documented as much more important to the health and quality of the lake rather than septic issues. I would also like to make sure that it's not just the whim of the select board that's taking this into account and that all these voices are really being well-heard and that, uh, what is finally conceived of is fair. Because the, uh, point about the inspections having this up to a thousand-dollar penalty seems really burdensome to me. Um, there are different levels of inspection. And there's a simple inspection that the pumper does when he just pumps out your tank every three years and tells you that everything is fine and your system is working great. There's no reason to have a full-blown inspection that includes measurements and, uh, perk tests and slump tests and all that stuff done when you're, you've just been told that your system is working well. So the second point is about the people who supply these services. This seems like a boondoggle to me for them to jack up their rates for ser, uh, for inspection services. And I'm wondering if, when this is, uh, finalized, if the board will include something about how much these companies can actually charge for different levels of inspection. Because if you have a system that's working properly and you have it pumped every two to three to five years, however heavily you're using the system, it should last you without needing to be re-inspected on a regular basis. Having the pump should be sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, John Bean or Ben, you saying your last name in preference. Go ahead.
Yep, John Been, hi. Um, my daughter lives on Crystal Lake Road along with my son-in-law Ben Agarow, who's at that, uh, water convention in New Orleans. Um, I agree, we all agree that we need a cleaner lake and I just wanted to say a few things. Um, we should make sure that this board, um, identifies and includes all systems that are within five hundred feet of lakes and within a hundred feet of tributary streams. Based upon the number identified, which I don't know if we have that number yet, conduct an inspection of each system over a period of, let's say, three to five years to prevent overburdening the municipality. This inspection should include a septic pump-out, review of the septic tank, the D-box, the leach fields or anything else that comprises of the system. We should also confirm, uh, household water fixtures that discharge into this system and verify that the existing system is sized properly. And then based upon this inspection, over, like I said, three to five years, depending on how many properties we have, draft any further regulations, um, if necessary. Uh, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, that's everybody who has their hand up online. Uh, we, it has been an hour and forty-five minutes. Could everybody like to make a second comment, raise your hand now, just so I can get a sense of how many as we go schedule? Okay.
Cut the time down to one minute.
Yeah, let, let's, let's do two minutes for these second comments. And if you've got your hand up now, we're going to go to you for a second comment. Um, if not, we're going to, and after that, I think we'll close the public hearing. So let's start with Betty, she's had her hand up all, all evening, so go ahead. Say your name a second time.
I live on Crystal Lake Road. We have a neighbor who has started the procedure to have an appropriate septic tank put on his or her, because I don't want to identify, property. And it is already at year two for them to be able to identify who to come, who to have it inspected by, who to get a design done and have another, you know, because you just don't go with the first person to do it and somebody else has to come. They are on year two and they are hope that by next year, they will have their septic system in. I think that the board needs to understand that this is a long process. I myself, when I moved up, and I've stated this before, I called, when I moved up to have my septic pump, it was a six-month wait, luckily he could get me in, in three months because otherwise the winter would have ensued. It is a long process and, and it's very tough. And what I'm hearing from the septic inspector people is that a real inspection takes four hours to accomplish. So I doubt that it was possible for eight inspections to happen in the cause, in the time period of a day or two. Just is not reasonable.
Good, thank you.
I just want to clarify a couple of things. One, I think that's part of the reason we didn't write the hundred-and-eighty-day system replacement in there, we understand it's going to take time. And then on the inspection side, we had multiple inspections done on Crystal Lake this year and they took approximately an hour apiece. So they're not four-hour inspections.
Right, so I saw this gentleman's hand up, one second.
Pete, you go.
I just have a quick question. One is, I, I agree with everything you said, we, we need to pump, not a problem. Uh, but I would like to, uh, have that inspection, like, like the gentleman said, like more than three years. It's a lot of money. Uh, but the other thing I want to ask is, when we leave tonight, you're going to discuss everything and come out with the final? Or are we going to get a chance to see your final and come back for a one last discussion?
So after the public hearing, the board will deliberate. There's a likely scenario, given the time, and we have a full agenda to pursue after this public hearing, that we'll choose to deliberate and adjust and think about what we've heard tonight at our next meeting. But I can't actually speak for the board until we get there. But the, the board will deliberate on what to do after the public hearing is closed.
Okay, so, so will we or will we not see a, a finalized, re, or revised draft of what everything has been going on today?
Yes, all deliberation will be done in public. At public meetings. Jean?
Jean Patton, just two or three comments. First of all, I have an environmental fact sheet from the DES website and that specifically states right here that you should get your system pumped every two to three years. Um, the other thing I just wanted to say is, I know a lot of people keep talking about, well, I have a new system, so I shouldn't have to get it inspected. A new system can go awry as well as an old one. And I can also tell you that, because I've seen enough of them from my husband, that once a septic system is inspected, on the back of that slip that is from the DES inspector, once it's stamped that it's approved, they are no longer responsible for anything that happens to that system. So if there was something in there that wasn't done quite right and they missed it, sorry. So that's just my comments.
So the other folks who are ready, so Steve?
Steve Patton, so I've heard a lot of good information, I've heard a lot of poor information. I think a lot of people don't understand really how septic systems work. Septic tank is just a small part of the system. The state also has, or is supposed to have, an enforcement division. I've met this guy years ago, so where is he? Lost and lost him, like most of the inspectors. I would also like to say that I do have some knowledge in this. And anyone who would like to have an intelligent conversation with me, I'd be more than likely to give the yes and no. So what I know, I'm not going to profess I'm an expert, but I've been doing this a lot. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Let's go to the back.
Uh, I wonder if the board has considered having different rules for seasonal, uh, properties. Uh, seems like there's a lot of seasonal properties on all surrounding lakes around here. Having the tanks pumped, for those that have tanks, four times a year, three times a year, you're not going to get anything. And probably nobody's going to be there, if you live out of state, you may not be there. So is it really practical to just pump it four times a year with a regular, totally useless summer?
So again, that, that is already state law and that exempts somebody from this regulation. The people in that scenario are not subject to this regulation because there's already the state law.
Okay.
Uh, can we get a name, a minute taker?
Uh, sorry, can you say your name?
Sorry, Tom Dubuque, I didn't know I had to say it that way.
It's just easier for a minute taker who does a lot of them.
Yeah, Tom Dubuque, family. And again, I may, this gentleman may disagree with me, but when you're pumping the tanks, you're getting out the solids, within a week, that tank has refilled with gray water. And when you have an overflow situation like Crystal Lake, it's not the solids that are floating into Crystal Lake. It's, it is naphthalene deep, because that is a minority of the problem, we've identified that. But it's, it's the liquids, so I don't think pumping it every three years, it's kind of like changing your oil every three thousand miles. That came up because of OPEC and other carbon manufacturing, it's, it's not necessary, we all. That's all.
Thank you.
Maybe five.
Ms. Craig again, this is a gross, embarrassing question, but was there fecal matter present in your water test for the lakes?
Are you looking at me?
Right?
You have to ask Glenn, but there has been some e coli and.
This is a very big, and I would like, in reality, no test would show equal matters. I mean, we don't know where it's, well, we know some areas. We need more data before we can, well, for sure, to make it.
Okay, so then just a quick comment, I think you hit it on the head. It's the people that maybe are not in compliance or are not going to be able to be in compliance that aren't here. It's tragic, the costs involved of keeping our water systems up now, it's also tragic, there's nobody around doing any work. But, um, that, you know, that, this sounds very snarky, but if you have that personal problem of financing, that should not be at the hazard of someone else's help. Or the kids, or the dogs, or me, I'm going to start to be an old person, all of us, that should not be at our hazard. You know, if you have a neighbor in close proximity who has a leaking propane heating tank and they tell you, oh geez, really don't have enough money to fix that, is that okay? So, it's nice meeting you.
Thank you. Carol?
No, actually, go, go ahead, that's. I just, I wanted to speak to the timeframe that people are throwing around. Uh, after the last meeting we had, where we discussed this, the company, one of our, one of our neighbors contacted AOS, Advanced On-Site Solutions, um, Gary is a great guy, by the way. Uh, they had him come and design the system and they had to make a decision whether they wanted this thing replaced this fall or in the spring. That's not a long shot. That's just people aren't looking to find the best they can, they, they call one or two people and that's it.
Thank you, Carol.
They came to look, they wanted to look at our system.
Say your name.
Shirley Green. Uh, since that last meeting, we've had two people that wanted to come look at our system because you, we have point twenty-four acres. And this just takes up a tiny bit of that point twenty-four acres. So, uh, the first person who came, we told them about Gary's falling and, uh, this was on Monday, they visited us. Gary came on a Thursday and like Glenn said, the falling Thursday. And, uh, like Glenn said, they just have a choice whether they wanted to disturb their neighbors this fall or next spring. But, uh, we, uh, if anyone wants to see how small a system you can have on your property, welcome to come see ours. And it isn't really a septic, it's a wastewater treatment system. But the water that comes out of the last tank, we're supposed to be able to use. And also, the, uh, leach field, if a leach field is washed out, the only thing that isn't in that leach field is the solids. The rest of that, it's just as bad for your lake as.
Thank you. All right, we've got a couple more, right here.
Question, and I, I think I've asked this before, someone did. What type of inspections do you want? Because when I looked into it, what Elizabeth said, twelve hundred dollars and four hours is what they wanted.
As, as this is, is written, it would require an inspection from a licensed inspector. So we're going to rely on their professional knowledge to determine what that means.
See, I looked online.
You're going to accept a one-hour inspection or a four-hour inspection?
If a license, well, go ahead then.
The Board of Licensor has guidelines for what should be inspected during different situations. I've tried to look that up, it didn't just come up, but we went to New Hampshire Lakes, or some citizen here did, told them what was going on, they sent, they recommended an inspector that was hired and brought out and then they ran cameras down the system and it took like an hour and they're going to get a report and all will be good, so.
And the short answer was again, we are going to accept the reports from professional licensed inspectors. Then the town's not going to, as written, that's, that's, that's the criteria.
Can we get a name? Eric's name?
Oh, she did.
Oh, she did?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Um, I think I saw two more.
No, Eric, we did not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ryan Bradage.
Okay.
Crystal Lake.
In the back, we have two more, three more in the back and then we'll, we'll call it for a second.
Uh, Red Bull and Spectron. Without addressing the feeder tributaries, um, and all other uh, things running into the lakes at the lowest elevation, um, you can lock down, uh, everybody around the border, the twenty percent of us, I think that was this gentleman, um, the twenty percent of us. And at most, you'll get a one to two percent improvement in the water quality, which is in the margin of error, but calculation and not statistically relevant. So unless you, uh, address, uh, uh, the other folks who are legitimately contributing to this problem, uh, we could spend a whole lot of money being good lakeside residents and unfortunately I can probably handle it. But that brings me, John asked, there was no one door-to-door and he just happened to catch me in. And he said, uh, there's a whole lot of folks on, um, uh, Crystal Lake that are not going to have the room, given the spots that they inherited to do this. Um, uh, and it's going to force them out of their properties. Uh, without financial assistance from the town, you have both people losing their property uh, and going into shake dead, they're going to do it privately. Um, uh, the second point is that, uh, and some of those properties will then be forced for sale. Also, anything that's regulated, and I think that was the point over here, that the price is going to go up fifty percent. So we're talking about six hundred dollars for an inspection, well, as soon as you mandate a regulation, it's going to be twelve hundred to three times that, it'll happen pretty quickly.
About fifteen more seconds.
All right. Um, well, uh, the other thing that John mentioned, which I have some personal experience with in selling my property recently, was the nature of the inspection and several folks have brought that up tonight. Uh, and the perk tests, uh, if you drive that in the wrong place in a leach field, you can wreck one of the feeder pipes. Nobody knows exactly where they are, somebody made that point about it's kind of unknown except to see the top of the field. And so there's just a whole lot more specificity that needs to be done before you drop this blank, uh, blanket regulation. Now, under twenty percent of the folks, uh, when you, you won't get any improvement within the margin of error.
Thank you for your comment. So we have two more people who have their hands up, so it's going to be, oh, in, in either order, but we had, yeah, go ahead.
Senior.
So this, sorry, name again.
I'm sorry, Terrence.
Yes.
Uh, some municipalities have actually partnered with, um, with grant agencies to provide monies for people that show that they cannot afford the inspections and the pumping, et cetera, affiliated with the regulation. I don't know if we've thought anything about that, is there a way that we can, you know, reach out to the state or other organizations to find out? We're looking at other towns that have actually done something like this, have partnered with some outside agencies to provide some funding to make it easier for people to accomplish this, that's the first thing. Um, and then the second thing was that I agree with this gentleman here, that I think it really needs to be more comprehensive and just be the lakes, it really does need to be, you know, buildings or that are on, within. And just be the lakes, it really does need to be, you know, buildings or that are on within some, in some buffer zone of a, of the tributary or waterway because of the runoff issue as well. So those would be my two points, is there any possibility to come up with some grant money to offset the inspection process? And the pumping process? And then to get people more informed if there is a problem, to address it if they have financial issues.
Thanks very much. All right. Last comment, to do with the last hand.
I'm real quick. I couldn't agree more with the need to do something in addition to the survey. And my name is Dan Regan, and given the number, it's like a lot of help. As far as the number of inspections that were being used at Crystal Lake, it was six. So we had room for eight, but only five people, one that had two properties, signed up. So there were six inspections done. The inspector said he would stay as long as it took. Most cases, it was an hour to two hours. He would have stayed four hours if necessary. He went from soup to nuts, walked me through everything. It was amazing. Last thing, Mr. Tracy, Mr. Young, I apologize. I said I wouldn't do this again, but SSB-13 is the legislative environmental fact sheet. It says you can, if you want to make a septic system, first and foremost, inspect your septic system every year. Your tank should be pumped at least every two to three years. I encourage you to read it. The board has already made concessions. I would urge the board not to make further concessions on the inspections. Three years.
Thank you very much. I believe we have one hand up online for a second comment.
There were actually two, but in the confusion, I think we used somebody, they.
So we will start with Phil Bartels. Please unmute yourself and make your comments. Phil Bartels, make your comment, please.
Do you do this? Please mute yourself for now.
Yes, hi. I just wanted to make a remark. About, about the bull scout that came to the, that came to the meeting. I think that's wonderful. I was so happy to see him there. And everybody did a great job talking. Bye.
Thank you. Phil Bartels, okay, there we go.
My one comment was that there is on the state who certifies the, the septic reports. Section 603 does have the requirements for the certification, the minimum requirements for this, for the inspection. So there is a document on that sort of requirements. Unfortunately, it's very qualitative, not quantitative. So it, it, it's subjective in what is good, what is bad. Unfortunately, that's a professional, that's its current state of assessment. But there are details that you can get from the state. What is a certification? That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. So we've been, this has been a great hearing. We've had two hours. We, we got the folks who initially put up their hands for second comment as well.
And I am going to move, close the public hearing at this time.
Second.
Okay. One person, one.
Motion on the table.
So there's a motion on the table. The hand went up after, long after. You have it? Okay, so we have a motion on the table. All in favor to close the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. We greatly appreciate it. We're going to recess in five minutes, at which point we need anybody who wants to stay with us. Anyone who wants to have conversations at the outside. Next up is.
Are you guys going to deliberate?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
That's why I'm still sitting here.
I'm a little, little bit, it's okay. So deliberation of that. I'm going to suggest that we think about everything we heard and deliberate at our next meeting.
I love this.
Great.
I agree.
I have a lot of notes and a lot of stuff today.
Yeah, there's a lot to think about, maybe if you listen to it.
If we wait, also, we can watch the video.
Right.
Yeah.
We see what needs to happen.
I'd rather have a roof than a mine.
Okay. But are you comfortable with waiting?
Oh, I am, I am. But you will recall, when we've brought this up first, I'm just going to plug this in here. I said, you know, the three-year pumping will, will be no big deal, but the inspections are going to be a killer.
Yep.
Nice job, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will, there's consensus to do the deliberation at our next meeting?
There is.
Yes.
Agreed.
Okay, so then we can move on to capital reserve fund expenditures discussion. The sidewalk construction reserve fund, the $13,863.58. And updates are pending is the first one.
Well, I could start this with like, I'm just going to do them all as one, and then we can do independent motions. We've been working on the CIP plan. I can let Dan talk about that a little more if he wants. And we will be back to present the plan to you in the near future. But during this discussion, Tracy had brought up at a select board meeting that there was the sidewalk construction reserve fund. I had already recommended to the CIP committee that we not move forward with the approval to get a loan with today's interest rates and the CIP fund that we have. It made a lot more sense just to pay for the concrete and, or the sidewalks and move on. With the sidewalk construction reserve, as of last year, the trustees of trust funds show that we have $13,863.58 that is spendable out of that fund. There may be some tweaks in that number, so that will, you'll see that the motion is written a little bit different, just that we expend that fund with the remainder coming from CIP. And that was my recommendation to them after looking into this fund, was that we do that and the rest of the money just come from CIP, so we don't have to take a loan for the $40,000 on the sidewalks.
The annual report showed $17,246.
Yeah, but that's not a correct number. It's part of the fund issues that we have had with the loss of the $300,000.
So that fund was, was part of the $300,000 loss.
So the spendable amount that we know of right now is $13,863.58. We did get some money back. Once they get that all distributed and stuff, I believe there's going to be a little bit more. But anyway, we would like to do that and then move forward at next year like we did and just get rid of that sidewalk.
You need a motion for that, am I correct?
We're going to need a motion for the expenditure.
Right.
And we can work on the.
Yeah, the selectmen are allowed to expend, authorize the expenditure of that fund, if I understand it correctly.
Yes, and there should be a motion in your packet.
Do you have any?
Go for it.
The only, the only thing is that $40,000 was approved about four years ago. Had it been set up to be financed, but that doesn't mean we have to finance it, so.
Right.
I would just assume it came right strictly to the CIP cash.
I would like to expend that money and close out that fund. I think that closing out of the fund may have to wait until the annual meeting. I don't know. I'll let you research that. But I see no need to continue that fund, close it out 100% and move forward.
Yeah, the closing of the fund will have to go to town meeting and be voted by the voters, but we can expend that fund.
But it can be closed with zero.
Exactly, exactly.
So are there two suggested motions for this one?
Yeah, the second one, if you want some explanation, is just election ballot counting devices. We do have a grant from the, the state to pay for, I think, half of them up to $7,000, if I got my numbers right without looking at it. Lindsay had come to the CIP committee asking if we can make a recommendation to the select board to expend money out of the CIP reserve now, so we can get those ordered, get them tested, get them in place, so we can run through the town meeting election next year, which is a smaller election and easier one to try new machines on before we move into state primaries and federal elections.
And the machines?
Replaced.
Are the new machines going to be basically the same as the old ones, or are they significantly different?
I think they're quite a bit different, but the machines we have now are no longer supported and have to be replaced.
But they are just tabulators and not connected by net.
Yeah.
To anybody. There are machines, are tabulators.
The new ones will not be.
And the new ones won't be connected to the net either?
Nope.
Perfect.
Nope, strictly local. My only thought on that, and please correct me if I'm wrong, could we also expend part of the municipal facilities maintenance and equipment capital reserve fund for this instead of the CIP? It, it says maintenance and equipment. That's certainly equipment.
I think a legend was meant for building.
Yeah, not municipal.
And what I, I can't tell, as I said, in what I could read and what I could research online, it simply defines it as municipal facilities, comma, maintenance and equipment capital reserve fund. It's certainly equipment.
It's not.
My reason for thinking in that direction.
It's not equipment of a municipal facility.
It is town-owned equipment, however. It is town-owned equipment, however.
But it's not facility-related.
Yeah. I think that might be a stretch.
Yeah. My reason for that is thinking our cost of the expenditure is under ten thousand dollars, which is the CIP amount that we aimed for in the past few years. It has a match, which puts it over ten. However, our expenditure is under ten.
I don't know what the balance of that municipal facilities account is.
Somewhere around fourteen thousand, according to.
Yeah.
There are some funds that are already spoken for, that haven't been expended, that until, and it may be something we're not going to expend it on, but until that's cleared up, it's not necessarily available.
Yeah, I don't think it fits, and then the ten thousand dollar thing doesn't apply to the CIP funds this way. It is an expenditure that qualifies for CIP.
I'd rather.
Well, it does qualify for CIP. I don't question that.
We could take that fund and use it on the elevator. I mean, the godforsaken elevator that we love to talk about. No, I'm just saying, that's an actual piece of building equipment that we are actually, so I'm saying, I'd rather see us do that than try to stretch it into the voting.
I guess I'll ask a question. How sure of a thing is the grant?
It's a, it's a guaranteed grant.
Okay.
So do we need a motion?
Yes.
We need two motions, one for each.
Authorize the expenditure of up to six thousand dollars from the CIP CRF fund for the immediate purchase of two voting machines with additional funding coming from grant funds for a total of up to thirteen thousand. And further authorize a town manager or their designee to take such actions and execute all documents that may be necessary.
Second, third?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Second motion?
Authorize the expenditure of the entirety of the sidewalk construction reserve fund with the additional amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars to come from the CIP CRF fund for the payment of all costs associated with replacement and resurfacing and sidewalks in the twenty twenty-four fiscal year. And further authorize a town manager or their designee to take such actions and execute all documents that may be necessary.
Second, with a question. It says all funds. Necessary. I just don't want it to be a cap.
But there's already the forty thousand dollar cap based on the town meeting vote, so that's why it's not to exceed forty thousand dollars.
Is that what I mean? Okay, you can interpret it that way.
We'll take whatever remaining funds from CIP.
It's a little verbiage thing, but okay, if you're gonna interpret it that way, that's fine. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
It's my file?
Yes. Okay, highway safety acceptance grant, we already did. The sewer connection request, map ten A, lot seventy-five, A six.
Do we need to go on that?
I move we does it authorize, that's what you want for a word? Grant the request to connect to the sewer system for map ten A, lot seventy-five dash A six.
Is there a second? Are there discussion, a question?
I have a question. Is that a private residence or is that?
Yes, it's a private residence, single-family home lot.
Because we control the fund. Each time someone wants to come into the system, they have to be approved.
Because it is possible that it'll be, not the case now, but it's possible that we would not have capacity to accommodate someone or a project. We have plenty of capacity now, but, but that's the sort of the general logic for it. Okay, discussion, further discussion.
Was there a second? Did I miss it?
Oh, second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, all right, that passes. All right, Mascoma Lakeside Park Committee resignation from Dr. Brufay.
Make a motion, we accept the resignation?
Good thanks.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Dr. Brufay, for your service. All right, Energy Committee application from Pelton, from Mrs. Catherine Pelton.
I move we accept the application of Ms. Pelton to the Energy Committee.
Oh, second.
Okay, any questions? All in favor?
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Looks like a great candidate.
Yeah.
She's already attended a couple of times. She's very helpful, very helpful.
All right, next up, four Brayley and six Brayley tax abatements. These are the ones that we discussed last time.
We discussed, yeah, we discussed these last time, but we discussed the process in whole. In your packet, I'm gonna say it looks like this. It's not the long pages. Julie broke it down into the twenty twenty-four taxes, which will need to be abated. And then on the back, the larger amounts are the liens that need to be completely cleared for those two properties. And then we, I've talked with the Lakeside Cooperative, and if the select board does this, then we will get with them for any future taxes owed that they will have to pay.
So this will be the procedure moving forward, correct?
If a park takes the property before we hit the property, if we take it, then we'll do something similar that we did before, where we'll sell it to them for a dollar or something and make the.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it's the cleanest, easiest way in this complicated situation.
Yes.
Just, because my brain is getting tired and buzzy. So you need a motion on this agreement and the abatement pieces, or you?
Just the two abatement pieces.
Just the two abatements, okay.
And they should probably be two separate motions, one to abate the tax twenty twenty-four and one to clear the liens from the previous issues.
I'll make that motion. That.
That's it.
So.
Okay, thank you.
The first motion will be to abate the twenty twenty-four property taxes for map eleven, lot eleven forty-four and map eleven, lot eleven forty-five. I guess I should have said the amounts, but in the amounts of one eighty-seven seventy-four for lot forty, eleven forty-four and one twenty-sixty-nine for lot eleven forty.
Oh, can you just use AI and make it sound like a human?
Yeah, I, I, what he said.
So Kate, is there a motion?
Yes, it sure is.
So Kate has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor, Sarah?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the property, the taxes for twenty twenty-four are abated, and then we need a motion to abate the lien.
I could say this on myself. I think I might be able to do it. That's right. I make a motion to abate the liens for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three for map eleven, lot eleven dash forty-four in the amount of one thousand eight hundred fifty-one dollars and ninety-four cents. And map eleven, lot eleven dash forty-five in the amount of one thousand one hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Second.
Discussion.
Thank you.
Dan.
It's fourteen eleven, not eleven eleven, I think.
It says map eleven.
Eleven, lot eleven.
We'll say this map eleven, lot eleven.
Okay, because this says fourteen eleven, that's why.
Oh, God.
What did I hear from?
It's fourteen eleven. We will exempt both motion.
What do you read?
Okay.
The agenda? And the tax lien.
Yeah, that needs to be fixed. I'm like, I, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
It's map fourteen.
Map fourteen.
Fourteen eleven. We can, we can address both.
So we have a motion for map fourteen, lot eleven forty-four, map fourteen, lot eleven forty-five. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. But did you have a question?
I have a question. And I'm asking for a favor, Kate. Why are we abating some of these taxes? Can you come and lay mine?
So do you wanna give the, the quick spiel on this particular unit?
Yeah, it's a really complex legal situation with mobile homes that are in a park. The mobile home is actually the home that gets taxed, and the land is the mobile homes, and it's easy, the way the New Hampshire law is written, to get in a catch twenty-two where nobody takes any properties. And if we do, we have park rent to owe, and if they take it, they have taxes to owe. So it's more fiscally responsible for the town to work with the mobile home. The mobile home just took ownership of these homes, the mobile home park did. So we're abating the taxes, so they can either remove the homes or get a new home in there and get them back on the taxes.
Okay.
But it's not just abating taxes.
It's not, it didn't mean a nice buying.
No, no.
Come to my house, I'm sorry.
No, sorry.
In this case, our understanding is that the the back rent owed exceeds the taxes owed, so they're going through the legal process to take them, and then this.
The back rent will almost always exceed the back taxes.
Can you give a name for a minute? Your name for a minute? Becky Bunch?
All right.
Are you gonna put my dumb questions in? All of them.
Those are not, those are not poor questions. Those are very good questions to put on this, yeah.
And it helps other people understand.
Did we go on that?
No.
No. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay.
That is a complete acceptance of the Lakeside Park Fund amount of one thousand six hundred ninety-six dollars.
I make the motion to accept a donation from the Mascoma Sailing Club to the Mascoma Lakeside Park Trust Fund, but thanks.
Second, discussion.
And I I would like to to thank the sailing club. This was in reference of the bearing the underground line. We were able to get a lot of that project donated, but Liberty did have some cost to that, and they made a donation to help offset that.
That's fantastic. That's a really good.
So that's what this is?
Piece of that.
Yes.
Yeah, it's extra nice.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Okay, so that completes our agenda business. There's one administrative item which we'll deal with as signatures. And then we are to public comments. Is there any comments from the public to come before the board? Go ahead, Shirley. And again, we're gonna always ask people to say their names, because it's been a long night.
Say that too?
You don't have to. I can hear you now.
This is, I'm reading this letter on behalf of the Lakes, Mascoma Lakeside Park Committee to the select board. Mascoma Lakeside Park Committee expresses our thanks to the town for all the work done to date to complete this phase of the successful planning and development of MLP. Especially to Nicholas Holby.
Huesch.
Is that right?
Huesch.
And the DPW crew. While this phase is nearly complete, more work remains, particularly in supplementing park maintenance to be continued by DPW as well as planning and organizing maintenance and further improvement of additional funds from donations and possible grants become available. We also hope to provide watershed stewardship, education activities and.
So got her.
Strong arrow.
Sorry for interrupting. Alice is gonna have to change her name.
I know, John, go ahead.
You can see where I started to write my name, Alice. Should I put yours over that?
Oh, wait.
Let's listen to Shirley.
That's worth losing it.
Go ahead, Shirley.
I was objecting. We also, I'll start that sentence again. We also hope to provide.